Take a moment and please silence your cell phones. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have to add an item to the consent agenda. Right. It's a, yeah.
Is that this one?
No. No. This is an item on the agenda to authorize Kathy to be able to sit in for Gary.
That doesn't just happen.
Yeah. I don't think she's going to find it because I think somebody walked off today in the meeting. Why don't we do this? Why don't we go ahead with the consent agenda and then we find that item, we'll take it up, we'll fit it in. Okay. Or accept, she's already back. Thank you. Just read it. Okay. So it's an additional item on the consent agenda, correct Maggie?
Yes.
Okay. So we have an additional item on the consent agenda. We have no proclamations by the way tonight, so we're going to jump right to the consent agenda. This is the additional item on the consent agenda because our city manager is away and we have our acting city manager here, Kathy Ball, who is normally our assistant city I will be, City Manager Jackson says I will be out of town from June 24th, 2017 until June 30th, 2017 by this email. For the time that I am absent, I am designating Assistant City Manager Kathy Ball to serve as Acting City Manager and during that time Kathy Ball is authorized by me to exercise my powers and to perform any and all of my duties as City Manager. And I hereby delegate the same to her. This designation will terminate upon my return on July 1, 2017. And then should, do I need to read the statutory provision? Okay. Nope. So there's a statute that authorizes this action. So with that addition to the consent agenda, the consent agenda is before us. I do know we want to highlight one item and have some folks speak on it. Are there any other questions though? Comments, questions for staff regarding the consent agenda?
I have two questions. One on item H and one on item B. Let me just go ahead and do that.
Yes. Ken, I'm feeling, I'm feeling Ken is going to be item H.
So item H, it's just the resolution about the energy efficiency upgrades and the civic center parking deck and that's awesome. My question is, are we looking at that for other parking decks or are they, have they already been upgraded?
They've already been upgraded. This is the only one that we have left. And we really delayed the action on this one since it's the oldest garage, but we felt, working with Duke, we felt like the timing was good for this one.
Okay. That's great. My question on B, and I don't expect anyone to necessarily have the answer to this tonight, but I have heard, this is about Triangle Park. So my understanding is the city doesn't own Triangle Park, we lease it from somebody? Is that correct? I don't. Nikki.
Or? So yes, I'm Nikki Reed, the city's real estate manager, and yes, we leased that from the Asheville Oil Company.
Okay. And is that a, I've heard some concern in the community that maybe that lease is about to come to an end and are we doing anything to renegotiate an extension or is it a?
We've actually leased that property for a number of years. I think it's over 30 years now that the city has been leasing from the Asheville Oil Company. And so we do take a lead time when we see that the leases are coming to an end and ensure that we negotiate well in advance of the termination to ensure that we're able to continue that relationship.
Okay. Great. It's just a very important piece of.
Absolutely. And we honor that, sure.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Okay. Why don't we do this first? Let's have a motion to approve the consent agenda with a second and then I'll ask for public comment on the consent agenda.
Move to.
It was a tie.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second from key.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. If there's anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda or would like to of course speak to any item on the consent agenda now is your opportunity.
Todd Stimson, you know who I am. I've been here a few times. I wrote a little speech here that I just want to go over quickly with you. It's about the resolution that's in front of you, which is letter N on your consent agenda. Asheville City Council members, thank you for your time and consideration in this resolution. Thanks also to all citizens that have made it here from Asheville and from across the state. There's people here that are from other parts of the state. This resolution is not about marijuana, as many consider it, but about medical cannabis. It was drawn up with considerable effort to touch on specific issues, facts, relevant matters in our society today, not preconceived notions based on rumor and tradition. The resolution was written with love and compassion by Kerry and I. It was reviewed, edited, approved by two attorneys of Asheville, Rod Kite and Ben Scales, which I thank for making this possible. The resolution is not just about one person or one organization, but about all citizens and residents of not only Asheville, but of those of the state of North Carolina. Today, the resolution in front of you will give hope and comfort for citizens to possibly have a healthier and brighter future. Cannabis allows tens of millions of citizens to mitigate or eliminate their symptoms without becoming addicted or incapacitated. Without support for legislations, the citizens who really get hurt are those who need cannabis the most. Many states have taken a more responsible or reasonable and traditional approach. According to the Institute of Medicine, 100 million Americans suffer from chronic pain. That's more than diabetes, heart disease, and cancer combined. One out of every five American reports that physical discomfort interrupts their sleep two times a week or more, and more than 10% of the workforce loses productivity due to the pain every two weeks. Out of the National Academics Society's Engineering and Medicine Report released in January 2017, it states, "There is conclusive or strong evidence that cannabis or cannabinoids are effective for the treatment of chronic pain in adults." Our law enforcement agencies use their limited resources to arrest 750,000 people on cannabis charges every year. That's one every 42 seconds vastly outnumbering violent crime arrests or arrests for any other drug. This has warped our most important institutions from family and the workplace to healthcare, taxation, and consumer protection and erode. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Which includes that topic.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. I am Timothy Sadler. And this issue is about efficiencies in government as well as respecting the taxpayer. Cannabis saves taxpayer money in multiple ways. By reducing opioid addiction, and please see the University of Michigan study, I'll follow up with that in email. Healthcare costs are reduced and crime rates decline. On top of that awesomeness, medical cannabis creates jobs for the local economy, living wage jobs that require very minimal skill. Our folks that we see vagrant out on the street, there actually is opportunity for them. All of these new jobs create new tax base. That all said, not only is it morally reprehensible, Mike Fryer, to not support this position, it is the only politically reasonable position in this day and age, given the reduction in healthcare cost as well as crime. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi. First, I would like to thank you for taking the time to listen and care.
State your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tom Verbowers. And it speaks to the open minds and hearts of the people of Asheville. My brother was diagnosed with squamous cell carcinoma shortly after I moved to North Carolina 13 years ago. It's a very aggressive cancer and so aggressive treatment followed. Part of his recovery was the removal of all but two lymph nodes and various muscles on the left side of his neck. Upon returning to work, he was found unable to stay awake, focused, comprehend and complete tasks, and was fearful he may lose his very demanding job. The pain medications he was taking to deal with the major side effects of the treatment made him very sleepy. When he shared these concerns with his doctor, the doctor suggested he try medical cannabis for the pain and to sleep at night. My brother was never a recreational cannabis user, so I was shocked to hear that he was using it. It made all the difference in the world. It allowed him to focus, stay awake, and to rest comfortably at night. He continues to use it to this day and allows him to have a fuller life. Thank God, he lives in a state that provides his natural option. My mother is now a convert. She's 91 years old. I'm disabled. I have invisible disabilities and must take powerful medications to control my various diseases. It can have many serious side effects, so my blood must be drawn regularly to check my liver and kidney. For the past year and a half, I was losing so much hair that I finally invested in a wig. After a time, I chose to stop taking one of my medications and coincidentally, my hair stopped falling out. I must continue to take harsh medications that may be creating other problems in my body to provide at least a somewhat normal life. If medical cannabis were available in North Carolina, I would be able to use, I'm sorry, a safe drug and stop depending on toxic pharmaceuticals. If the new healthcare bill passes, citizens will negatively be impacted and unable to afford prescriptions. Medical cannabis could be a cost-effective answer to replace prescriptions, provide a safer alternative, and lower people's healthcare bills. I urge the council to please consider this resolution and show that Asheville can be the leader in the state to demand that our citizens have access to safe, natural healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? It's in the back. So sorry, it's hard to talk. Please state your name when you all come up.
Sendell Williams. Good afternoon, council members. I stand before you today to share with you my family's story. A story that's become all too common in the lives of everyday Americans: cancer. I wonder how many people a day receive a phone call from a brother, a sister, a mom or dad, that a simple trip to the doctor turned out to be cancer. For me, it was my father, my grandmother, and my uncle. My father called me and told me he had prostate cancer. My world began to fall apart. No one ever wants to think about losing a parent, someone who has given their all to make you the person that you are today. But I had to face that. At the age of 24, I had to come into grips with my dad never walking me down the aisle, never seeing my first child, and/or even witness my first gray hair from dealing with his grandbabies, as he used to joke. My grandmother was next, she had breast cancer. In the world we live in today, I have a one in three chance of developing breast cancer. My grandmother was lucky, you know? But now without some sacrifices, it could always come back in her remaining breast. Next was my Uncle Weldon, he got pancreatic cancer. His funeral was on my 27th birthday. I remember at his funeral, my Uncle Harold told a story about how my Uncle Weldon saved his life. He resuscitated him after he grabbed the cable that shocked and stopped his heart. He was a hero, but none of us could save him. Council members, you have it within you to devote yes to medical cannabis. In every scientific study, medical cannabis stops prostate, breast, pancreatic, and other cancers in their tracks and even sends them into remission. Please make stories like the one I just shared where it becomes an experience no one ever has to experience again. Medical cannabis is the answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. On the end here? Yes. You're on deck.
Good afternoon, council. My name's Dr. Mottenberg, and I am an expert in what's called cannabinoid science. And that's what we're dealing with here, the subject of cannabinoid science. Every single human being in this room has a system in their body that feeds off of what's called cannabinoid. It's called the endocannabinoid system. And if you learn about this science, you'll understand it's about nutrition and feeding the human body. This particular plant called cannabis has cannabinoids in it that are literally nutrition, which is now called a nutraceutical. That means it has the ability with the signaling system in the body to take this nutrition and use it to signal healing, and that's called neurogenesis. This is powerful, basic science when you really look at it and get past the prohibition and the persecution of ignorance. I'm bringing this to you because since I stepped down as an elected official many years ago now, I have been on the pursuit of getting people to learn about this truth. These people have been traumatized in our society by the abuse of authority on this prohibition. Cannabis is a nutraceutical that's for healing, and if you understand the science of it, get out of the way of the politics and stop it so that we can heal as a society. I want to thank you for hearing me and wish us all good luck.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Aaron Clark. I've been a priest for 14 years. My father was born in Hendersonville. My family has been in the area for over 200 years. My grandparents sold produce to survive the Great Depression, and we have been prominent in this area. All my great aunts and uncles have been here. But today, I suffer from chronic pain and PTSD from police brutality as well as anxiety, and I use medical cannabis as a medicine and a sacrament through Gnostic Christianity. We as Americans have a human right to use cannabis, use and access cannabis as a medicine, and I implore you to act now on behalf of all the constituents that have come to seek your aid today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did I miss anybody over here? Yes.
Dear men and women of the council, thank you for allowing us to discuss the needs to support the medical bills in the House and the Senate in North Carolina. My name's Taylan Breeden. I was diagnosed with Crohn's disease when I was just 20 years old. I was raised in a very religious and conservative home. My father was a retired police officer. The thought of using cannabis for my illness was the last thing that crossed my mind as I shrunk to 82 pounds, a bag of bones, as my ears started to fall out due to the lack of nutrition, as my peers and friends asked if I had an eating disorder because I was embarrassed to admit that I had a debilitating disease, a disease with no cure. My small intestine becomes inflamed, causing pain, a lack of appetite, the constant need to use the bathroom. I have to transition to an all liquid diet when I do go into flare-ups. I've been put on a number of medications whose side effects aren't worth the relief. Medical cannabis has been the most effective treatment for my Crohn's disease. The cannabinoids in the cannabis has anti-inflammatory compounds. It relieves the swelling in my gut, it makes me hungry, it duels the constant pain and the nausea. I have gained all my weight back. I was able to finish college, work full-time, become a farmer and an activist for things that I care about. Brian Turner, Terry Van Dyne, Susan Fisher are all reps that have co-sponsored this legislation. They're great reps to western North Carolina, and it's time that we stand up and support for legislation they believe in. They know that there's non-addictive substitute to treat pain, and I know the opioid epidemic is something that's affecting western North Carolina gravely. If there is something to substitute this painkiller problem with something that's natural and non-addictive, the treatment of my illness that's most likely going to shorten my life, I feel should be between me and my physician. And I strongly urge you guys to support this resolution and allow Asheville be the first step towards making this legislation across the state. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor, council.
You might have to put that back.
Mayor, council. My name is Andrew Fisher. I know most of you all. And what you may not know is that I've been arrested for marijuana possession. And a lot of people like me have become victims of an unjust war. That entire war is not over. The important thing that is in front of you is I just want to say thank you. There's people here really geared up for a fight. And when I said, no, this is on the consent agenda, this is, it's like, this is looking really good. I said, you know, maybe you don't have to risk your employer and speak on behalf of this thing. You know, maybe you don't have to risk these things. Maybe you should let someone else go up and speak. There's people that had these real concerns here. But I just want to say thank you for doing something that government rarely gets to do, which is to show compassion to people and restore a little bit of credibility in government. Because the government at the federal level has been lying about this topic for decades. And undoing that lie helps restore credibility in government. And doing your part to cheer on this bill that's in the Senate and the House right now at the state level is something really important. And I just want to say thank you for, thank you for putting this on the consent agenda. And you have my confidence that you're going to do the right thing on this one. Thank you.
Yes.
City Council, my name's Joshua Shaver, and I'm 28 years old. I'm a current medical cannabis user myself for chronic back fang and from scoliosis and to treat severe depression. I also watched in 2015 my father get off of a 20-year heroin addiction from, although pills and Suboxone didn't work, the doctors had taken them off of it, and it allowed us to become friends before he died last year. And he was a contractor here in Asheville. We built a lot of things, a skybar, solar panels. We've done a lot. But I've also watched medical cannabis help change people, and it helps me get out of bed and be able to go to work. It also helps me be a happy person. I also try to help other drug addicts that I knew through my father try to become clean. So I just urge everybody to try to look at all the ways that this can help everybody because I know that methadone is killing people and there's things that people are cutting drugs with and killing people left and right. I'd rather see people healed, and this is one of the ways to do it. I don't know all of the huge facts because I'm still learning everything myself, but I just urge the city council and everybody to see everybody's stories and try to maybe look into it themselves. Cannabis isn't for everybody, and I know that. It's just like anything else. If it's not right for you, then you shouldn't do it. But between me and my doctor, it's the only thing that keeps me going every day, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in here who wants to speak on this issue? We do have some people in the hallway, I think, that want to speak on the issue. Why don't we bring the hallway folks in and we'll hear the speaker while we do that.
Good afternoon, council. Question many officials and lawmakers have been asking is why medical cannabis should be allowed here in Asheville.
State your name.
My name's Del Tobismann.
Yes.
There is already a tremendous amount of evidence showing the medical benefits of cannabis on both the severely debilitated as well as the minorly afflicted. The sheer amount of maladies that can be cured and/or alleviated by the medical use of cannabis is absolutely amazing. Instead of listing off numerous facts and figures about this topic, which anyone can look up in a matter of seconds, I wish to convey my own experiences with you. I myself suffer from spinal degeneration and injury, which is what brought this subject into focus for me. I went from being the primary earner of my household and supporting four children to being bedridden and in constant pain. After two years of taking powerful opiate drugs to help me function just enough to get through the day, I learned that the state in which I lived, Colorado, had started to allow the medical use of cannabis. I went to my doctor to discuss the idea. He agreed that since I was needing more and more and higher and higher doses just to get through the day, that it was a good alternative. That is the beginning of my story. Not only was it incredibly helpful for me, but it prompted me to discard my profession as a builder and become a caregiver and grower for those people that were in even worse shape and unable to obtain the medicines they needed. I learned how to make medicines that work the best for pain, cancer, and epilepsy, and many other ailments as well, medicines that were in many, many forms, not just the plant itself. I was there in Colorado during a pivotal time when the medical cannabis industry was first emerging and saw firsthand not only how it affected my community, but also my county and state. I saw suffering people get the relief they so desperately needed. I saw the increase in a better quality of life and a rise in the local economy and job production, and the great benefits enacted from the utilization of the taxes applied to the growers going directly to the construction of new schools and clinics in underfunded areas such as the one I lived in. From then on, I made it my goal to help as many people as I could, as I had also been helped. So I implore this great city of Asheville to be the pioneers that start the process of medical legalization here in North Carolina, so we can further our goal of helping others get the life-saving medicines they need and to achieve a better quality of life. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm going to be brief. I would just like to share some personal experiences that I've had.
First, share your name.
My name is Gregory, Gregory Witz. Thank you. I'll also do this. So when I was 17, my girlfriend, who was living with me at the time, was diagnosed with ovarian cancer. And she was in bad shape. Everything was horrendous. She couldn't, psychologically, she couldn't go through it in addition to the pain and the problems. And honestly, it was like night and day. It gave her quality of life, which is priceless. It brought her a quality of life that she did not have otherwise. She didn't even know if she was going to live or not. She did luckily, but it was incredible. Now, my stepfather has multiple sclerosis, and the difference with him, again, it's like night and day because he's in pain all the time. He's got asbesticity in his spine, he can't control some muscles, and it's degenerative. He, since he started with the medical marijuana in New York, it's actually slowed the progression of the disease. It's cured so many symptoms. We know that'd be good for the economy, but just simply compassion for fellow human beings, there is a medicine out there that can help them. There's something that's so simple that would make such a difference. I'm not talking about teenagers smoking behind their house. I'm talking about people legitimately need these medicines. It helps with autism, it helps with, wider, I'm sure they've been mentioned before, so I won't get into it. But I just wanted to share my personal experience because it made all the difference with two people that I love. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie, is there anyone else out in the hallway?
We know that'd be good for the economy, but just simply compassion for fellow human beings. There is a medicine out there that can help them. There's something that's so simple that would make such a difference. I'm not talking about teenagers smoking behind their house. I'm talking about people legitimately need these medicines. It helps with autism, it helps with... wider, I'm sure they've been mentioned before, so I won't get into it. But I just wanted to share my personal experience because it made all the difference with people that I love. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie, is there anyone else out in the hallway? This is like our shock method. We break you, then you have to stand. So stand in front of that small room. And just please state your name.
Sure. My name is Lindsay Witt. And I'm sure that a lot of the people coming in here speaking are addressing specifically the various ailments, diagnoses and medical issues for people with diagnoses that can specifically be helped by cannabis itself. But what I would like to address is the potential of passing a medical cannabis legislation has for helping those who have other ailments that aren't specifically treated through that. And I would like to bring up the research done by W. David and Ashley Bradford from the Department of Public Administration and Policy at the University of Georgia, who examined data on Medicare Part D prescription between 2010 and 2013, who concluded that the national overall reductions in Medicare program and enrollee spending when states implemented medical cannabis laws were estimated to be 165.2 million per year. That was specifically in 2013. So it's also important to acknowledge how the savings on that broader spectrum through passing this kind of legislation could have in providing funding for people in other ways through those programs when that kind of money is being saved. Thank you.
Anybody else? One more? Okay. But they're, so they're making their way up? Okay.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Evans and this is more personal for me. Back in December, back in October 2015, my 15-year-old son was diagnosed with brain cancer. He had a grade III massive size of a grapefruit tumor on the backside of his head here. I've watched my son go through two surgeries. I watched him go through chemo, radiation, lose hair that he won't ever grow back. And then for a total year, we went cancer-free. But in December, this past December, my son's cancer returned. And the first thing they wanted to do was stick my son back on chemo and radiation. I then spoke to my son's doctor about the plan of taking my son to Colorado. I've looked at different alternative treatments. So in March, me and my son traveled to Colorado. There, my son done treatment. And then he continued to have treatment here. June the 6th of this month, my son now is cancer-free. All we had left is a small cyst and there was no chemo, no radiation. And for it to go from something in three months to nothing, that is something to fight for. I can't afford to travel to Colorado anytime I want. I took my life savings to go. I'm fighting it here because even though Aaron's tumor is gone at the moment, it is not curable. And we were told that it will come back and come back with force. And the doctor here told me to keep doing what we were doing. Aaron is a straight A student. He's going to be a sophomore soon, has no problem walking, talking, nothing, his weight, everything. And it's all due to cannabis. And that is why I'm sitting here fighting to get this done here. Not only am I here asking for y'all, I've also been to Raleigh. I believe this is worth fighting for. And I hope, as long as everybody else, we won't give up. And I thank you for taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Terry Boyd. I am a 35-year resident here in Asheville, North Carolina. I consider myself a local. I grew up in the Winston-Salem area. My background is in the medical field and medical sales. That includes pharmaceuticals. And I am today a cannabinoid science educator. I educate patients and physicians in the medical field on the science behind cannabis, why and how it works for so many conditions. Several years ago, someone said to me, "What was the difference between the LGBT community and the process, the progress that they have made versus the medical cannabis community?" The difference was that the LGBT community came out of the closet and they stepped up and they asked for what was right. Unfortunately, the people that are medical cannabis users, for whatever reason, whether they feel threatened of prosecution or being judged for using it, they remain in the closet. So I'm here today to represent the patients that I work with and the physicians that I have educated and my community. I'm here today because it's the right thing to do. This is a medicine that has been legal longer than it has been illegal. And only allowing some people in the United States access to it and not others is a crime. The crime is not using cannabis to illegally heal yourself. The crime is knowing that it's a medicine and that it can help people and keeping it from us. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is that it for the hallway?
Thank you for your time. My name's Shaffer. I'm not a citizen of Asheville. I'm a citizen of Lucas, which is about 35 minutes outside of Charlotte. I am a multiple sclerosis patient. I have had multiple sclerosis since 2002. This was when I was diagnosed. I showed symptoms in '99, didn't fully get diagnosed until 2002. There are people with my disease in legal states that I see and advocate, "Hey, we can have cannabis in this state. We can have cannabis." I can go just about anywhere that medical cannabis is had, I can get it. But this is my home. I was born in North Carolina. I was raised in North Carolina. I was arrested for growing my own medicine in North Carolina under a million-dollar bond. There are people, there are murderers that haven't seen a bomb that high. Why there was a bomb that high, I have no idea. I called Raleigh, I called. And the people in my area tell me, "Why don't you move?" Why should I have to move? This is my home. I shouldn't have to move to seek a medicine that somebody else can have across the border. This is my home. I don't want to go nowhere. I love North Carolina. I love this state. I wear a North Carolina, dirty old North Carolina hat and I'll wear it till the day I die. But I shouldn't have to leave to seek medicine that's available elsewhere. Please do the right thing. Please do the moral thing. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, I promised somebody. Yes, back here, did you want to speak? I'd say the one in the tie, but you're sitting next to Andrew and he's wearing a tie. But you're the other guy wearing a tie.
Hello, City Council, thank you for your time. My name is Douglas Jones. I've been a resident for 16 years in Asheville, North Carolina. A personal story, I grew up with my father being diagnosed with multiple sclerosis when I was five or six years old. He was a United States Air Force veteran. He got 18 years in and got honorable discharge. I had to watch him go from walking to a walker, to a wheelchair, to being bedridden with bed sores, catheter, all the bad things you don't want to see as a child. He passed away when I was 16. I do believe, besides the medications he was given, that some of his comforts may have also been from when I remember smelling, the being able to smoke some marijuana because it would slow down his seizures. And if you know multiple sclerosis, it has no cure. So the best thing to do is at least offer any comforts of hope to, you know, suffer through this disease as comfortably as possible. And on top of that, in the local area, I've noticed since 2010, I've lost like eight friends to opioid issues. I believe our pharmaceutical industry giving out the oxycontin starts as addiction issue. Then it's outpriced. And so they go hit the streets and get the dirty stuff on the streets, which kills all these people. And there's no excuse for this to happen in this society. We should be allowed to have medical marijuana because it hasn't killed anybody. Thank you for your time.
All right. Is there anyone else who wanted a chance to speak on this issue or other items on the consent agenda technically? No, okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, this is an opportunity.
For anyone who opposes what we're about to do in our community, and I'm sure there are some who don't like the fact that we're, I'm pretty sure, going to approve this, I'd like to note that Dr. Ron Paulus, who is CEO of Mission Hospitals, has said, "The only way we're going to cure the opioid epidemic is to replace opioids with cannabis for most pain control." So that's our chief physician in this city who believes that, and I think that's worth paying attention to.
So this is a resolution that Todd helped us have the opportunity to consider today. So thank you for your leadership in that. I hope it's okay if I call you the Kevorkian of the medical marijuana cause, but that's kind of how I think about you. That's a good thing, but you've had to make some serious sacrifices, though, in that effort. But we had a chance to consider this resolution in the Governance Subcommittee of Council and we approved it and brought it forward to council. So to be clear there, as one of the young ladies mentioned, that there's pending legislation in the state legislature to make this legal. This isn't something cities in North Carolina can legalize. We don't have the authority to do that, but the state certainly does. And so this is our way of showing our support for that legislation. And it so happens that our local delegation is in support of the legislation as well. And in fact, I believe is co-sponsoring the legislation. So that's how it landed here on our laps and we're thankful for the opportunity to be able to do that. So that's why I wanted to just make sure I gave some people some context about that. Does anyone else, Council, want to speak to this consent agenda motion?
Just to say thanks to everybody who spoke. This is obviously a really emotional topic and you all have very personal, deeply held stories. And that can be hard to get up and share in front of a room full of strangers, so thank you.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Gordon's not here tonight, but I'm sure he would show his support if he were here. And that was a 6-0 vote. Now, folks, it looks like a lot of you were here for this item on the agenda. We are now going to get into some super exciting things like the airport. So this is your opportunity to miss that, or you can say. You're welcome to say. I'm not encouragingly, but thank you.
Hey, Mel.
I was gonna say.
It's when I look at maps like this.
Where medical marijuana is older.
Yeah.
Lou, we know this is exciting. parking deck. I know how exciting it is. Okay. We have the Director of the Airport, Lou Blighwais, here to give us the annual state of the airport. This is under our presentation. Thank you, Lou. Take it away.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for having me speak this evening. My name is Lou Blighwais. I am the Executive Director of the Asheville Regional Airport. 2016 was another good year for us, three consecutive years of record-setting passengers. We continue to have four carriers: Allegiant Airlines at 31% market share, American Airlines at 24%, Delta at 34%, and United at 11%. We have 12 non-stops destinations in 2016: Maine, Newark, Laguardia, Chicago, Charlotte, Atlanta, Baltimore, Fort Lauderdale, Orlando, Florida, St. Pete, Ponte Gorda, and those were our top ones. We had Jacksonville and Palm Beach, but due to services by Allegiant, they pulled those services out, not because of our community, but because of the communities that they were serving. In 2016, we had 826,648 passengers. That was up 5% from the previous year. Our seats on aircraft were 502,980, down basically it's flatter, down 0.1%. From an operational standpoint, the airlines had 16,374 operations. That's up 2.3%, and our general aviation and military were up 0.9%, or 47,603,000 operations. From a construction standpoint, we completed Phase 3 of our airfield redevelopment. We're in Phase 4 now. Phase 3 was basically doing the drainage and grading, getting ready for the paving of the permanent runway that will go in this year. We started our five-story parking garage, 1,300 spaces, a $22 million project. It'll be 1,100 for public parking and 200 for rental cars.
Lou, did you say 1,300?
1,300.
That's unbelievable. It's a big parking.
It's a big buy. Have you seen?
We know, because we're in the parking deck business.
So what's your total parking?
Total parking, when it's done, good question. We're netting 800. We lost 400, basically for the footprint of where the garage is going.
Okay.
We're closing off those lower parking spaces permanently. That's where we get our biggest complaint. People carrying their luggage up the hill to the terminal. No one complains going downhill, unless it's raining. So we're taking those permanently out of service. So overall, we'll end up with about, we'll end up with about, I want to say about 22, 2200 spaces altogether. From a community standpoint, let's see, I'm sorry, we also demolished our old public safety building. This past year, we're making room for new additional aircraft parking on the commercial ramp. We opened a shuttle lot across the street. That's temporary while our garage is being built, and we also moved our employee lot around in conjunction with the Western North Carolina Agricultural Center. They're allowing us to use for employee parking until the construction is completed. From a community standpoint, we worked with Buncombe County, TDA, and CBB. We did an intensive air service market study showing where our community wants to go and where others from around the country want to come to us. We hosted an airline roundtable, hosting several airlines in town. That, again, was in conjunction with the CBB, but it was a success. The airlines had a nice opening, eye-opening of what Asheville really does have to offer, and hopefully that will lead to additional air service for our community. From a, let's see, we also hosted our first Wings for Autism event last year, and we also hosted our first Blue Ridge Honor Flight. We were the first in the country to start Honor Flight when it was started 10 years ago or so. Mr. Miller out of Henderson County started a new flight, recognizing the Korean veteran and the Vietnam War vets, taking them back up to Washington, DC. So we had our first one back in September. We had our second one this past spring. From a financial standpoint, our assets at the airport exceeds our liabilities by roughly $115 million. So is there anything that I'd be happy to answer any questions that the City Council may have?
I have a question. Are you going to have any electric vehicle charging stations in the new parking deck?
New parking deck, no, but we are going to have them in the surface lot.
Great.
We have contract, we got a grant from Duke Energy. We're putting in two. We'll see how successful those go, and if they're successful, we'll do more. The garage also was, it's not going to have it at first, but we did structure, from an engineering standpoint, to put solar panels on the roof if we go in that direction. So we did put, we incorporated this structural steel and concrete to be able to support those panels in the future.
That's great.
Also, I just want to say thanks for making the parking deck as pretty as a parking deck can be. You didn't have to do that. It's quite nice.
You haven't seen anything yet.
Okay, then. Are you going to paint it?
No. There are perforated metal panels that will be going up. If you see, if you're driven by it, and you've seen some metal, aluminum metal, those will hold the perforated metal panels. That will actually have a mountain seam, strictly made out of metal and perforated, you know, and perforation. The different sized holes creates an image. It's very intriguing. We went down to Miami at one of their garages to take a look at what it was done, and we've seen the image of what it's going to look like, and we're very, very pleased, in addition to the concrete panels that are already up there with the mountain scene on it. So we were very conscious of what our community looks like. We did not want it just a square box, and so we went out of our way to make sure that the aesthetics of the garage, being that it is in front of a terminal building, will be pleasing to people looking at it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you.
Have a great evening.
That concludes our presentations and reports. Next is our public hearings agenda. The first item on our public hearings agenda needs a continuance. Councilman Smith requested that we continue this item so that he would be able to be here. When we voted on it, we asked the applicant if that was okay with them, and they said yes, that would be fine with them. So do I have a motion to continue?
Move to continue.
To July 25th?
To July 25th.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone who wants to comment on the motion to continue item A of the public hearings agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. The next two items we've got here is a public hearing to consider changing the name of Hillcrest Drive to Luna Lane, a public hearing to consider changing the spelling of Kitchen Place to Kitchen Place, and Stuart Rorbaugh is here. Stuart, is this your first time here?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Am I just misremembering? Has it been a long time, or was I not yet?
It's been some time, yes, ma'am.
Okay. You're not going to let me haze you. All right. Okay. Do you want to do the presentation? Well, we got to open the public hearing on each one, so.
If I could, Mayor, I just want to make sure you want to go open. The first one's Kitchen Place.
No, the first one, let's do Hillcrest to Luna Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, my name is Stuart Rorbaugh. I'm the City of Asheville's E-911 Street Address Coordinator. I'll be presenting on the behalf of the Development Services Department. Inside your agenda packets of resolution for consideration, this is a request that began when owners of one of the affected lots supplied for a building permit and learned their street name, Hillcrest, was a duplicated street name. We have seven other streets with the exact same street name, Hillcrest. Through the petition process, a super majority of the property owners have agreed and petitioned the City of Asheville to rename this city-maintained street to Luna Lane. The map inside your agenda packet shows the Hillcrest. It's located in West Asheville, zip code 28806, between Sunrise Drive and Millbrook. Duplication of street names has the potential for misdirection or miscommunication, can hinder response for emergency services. Buncombe County's Emergency Services and Planning Department, City of Asheville Traffic Engineering, Asheville Police and Fire Departments have confirmed the proposed name Luna Lane will not duplicate another street name elsewhere in Buncombe County or impair delivery of municipal or emergency services. The Public Safety Committee reviewed this renaming request at their April 24 meeting. Staff is recommending council approve the street name Luna Lane. Notice of the public hearing has been posted, published in the newspaper, and all adjoining property owners received notice of this hearing. Staffs heard no opposition to the renaming, unless you had any questions. I'll defer, allow the public to be heard.
So we just want to know how they came up with Luna Lane?
You would think it's easy to come up with a street name, but our database has over 8,900 street names, so.
Oh, so you can't pick one of those?
Right. So I had this list.
I have not seen Esther Mannheimer Street yet. I'll just.
It's not being used.
Yeah, that's next.
So I have a list of several hundred street names that are unique, that could be used, and I think this particular one was just randomly picked from that list.
I feel that there's probably a second grader behind this, but good. All right. All right. So we'll open the public hearing to rename Hillcrest Drive to Luna Lane. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt a resolution accepting the street name change from Hillcrest Drive to Luna Lane.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. And even more complex than that last one, renaming Kitchen Place to Kitchen Place.
At least we need a mountain in this one.
Stuart Rorbaugh, again, this is a request for a new spelling of Kitchen Place, spelling Kitchen with ending in -in. Many of the property owners and businesses have spelled the street name after the family name, Kitchen, ending in -in, but the city's E-911 database and currently displayed street name signs, and the attached map shows the street segment spelled with the E in. The property owners brought the street name spelling to staff's attention and petitioned the city to rename the street with a spelling ending in -in. The street is currently a city-maintained street. Buncombe County Emergency Services and Planning Departments, City of Asheville Traffic Engineering, Asheville Police and Fire Department have confirmed the proposed name Kitchen, spelled with an -in, will not duplicate any other street name elsewhere. The Public Safety Committee reviewed this request at their April 24 meeting and recommends council approve the street name change to Kitchen, spelled, ending in -in. Notice of the hearing was posted. Notice was published in the newspaper. Adjoning property owners mailed notice of the hearing. Staffs heard no strong opposition to the street name change spelling. Some emergency response staff did note that phonetically, the name Kitchen and Kitchen are identical. You could have situations where someone over the telephone is trying to explain their street name Kitchen and may have to repeat the spelling a couple of times. It would be more of a concern if the family name was spelled really uniquely, like KYCHIN, but with KITCHIN, that is not as much of a concern.
No. People just say it's Kit-Chin. Already we can think of a way to do that.
Unless you had any questions of staff, I'll defer and allow the public to be heard.
Is Google Maps going to be able to handle this change?
Yeah. A lot of people asked me that question about Google Maps, and a lot of people believe that Google Maps are the official street names, but in reality, Google Maps has really scanned USGS maps from the 50s and 60s. So they have thousands of street name mistakes in them just for our jurisdiction, and anyone can change a street name in Google Maps. It doesn't take any official capacity.
Really?
So we do have that scenario.
So you could get Esther Mannheimer.
Oh, right.
I checked it about three months ago, and Google Maps showed Kitchen ending in the -in. I've not checked it as of recently.
So they don't actually have to change it?
Right. I think that's an interesting piece of Google Maps. I didn't know. Thank you.
Well, you have to ask. It's not like Wikipedia where you can just do it.
Okay, but you can have your own Cecil Bathwell Avenue.
Well, Lookout is a confusing street, actually, so maybe.
Yeah, maybe. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Under item C, is there anyone wishing to comment about the changing of the spelling of Kitchen Place to Kitchen Place? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to change the name of Kitchen with E in to Kitchen with I in. Please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That was super fun. Thanks. All right. Now we have a public hearing to consider an economic development incentive grant for Riverbend Malt House. I do not see Heather, but I see Sam. Sam, you're going to have to tell us what that song was that your phone played to us earlier.
He saw you.
Wait it out.
So I plead guilty. I had, I promised I had it off. I'm not sure why it did that. Sometimes they just don't behave. I say that on behalf of everyone else who has had a cellphone malfunction in here. Thank you, Mayor Mannheimer, and for paying attention who was out of the audience. Sam Powers, Community and Economic Development Director. This is a consideration of a resolution authorizing an economic development grant agreement with Riverbend Malt House, a local manufacturer seeking to expand their operations within the City of Asheville. CEO of Riverbend Malt House, Scott Hickman, is present, and Mr. Hickman will make brief remarks about the company and the project at the beginning of the public hearing. Tim Lapkin with the EDC is also present tonight. The purpose of the city's participation in this project would be to induce Riverbend Malt House to make investments in the city, for expenditures to acquire and install machinery and equipment to make facility improvements, which increase the tax value as determined by the Buncombe County Tax Department in the amount of $9.5 million, and to create 22 quality jobs, 15 new jobs and seven retained positions within four years. At least five of those would be hired in 2017. As you know, the city only participates in performance-based grants. Our performance-driven grant is distributed after job and investment is achieved or mutually agreed upon, performance benchmarks are established. This project supports job creation and capital investment in the City of Asheville. The project supports regional cooperation in the project, and the city's grant amount would not exceed $95,000 in total, which would be paid in five installments, as noted, after performance has been achieved and documented. The grant is based on use of a portion of the new incremental increase from property tax revenues generated by the project for a five-year period. North Carolina law requires a public hearing be held before an incentive grant can be officially awarded. The project has an overall positive fiscal impact on tax revenues received by the city. Initially, during the grant period, the city would receive 50% of the new incremental property tax revenues, as well as existing property tax revenues from the project. After the grant period of five years ends, the city will henceforth receive 100% of all city taxes. The Economic Development Incentive Grant for Riverbend Malt House supports the city's strategic operating plan as it addresses council focus areas for a thriving local economy. City staff recommends council approve a resolution authorizing a performance-based economic development incentive grant agreement to support Riverbend Malt House in an amount not to exceed $95,000 over a five-year grant period. As noted, Mr. Hickman is present, made brief comments during the public hearing. Thank you, Mayor. Staff's available to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding this project?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open the, oh, are we going to do comments first? Okay.
Either way.
Nope, come on. All right.
So good afternoon. I'm Scott Hickman, and the CEO of Riverbend Malt. Thanks to the council, Mayor, for your time and attention this afternoon. Sam and Tim, thank you for your help. Sam, I know that you used the word brief twice, so I'll try to adhere to that. Riverbend Malt House, so beer 101. Beer, it's amazing what they're putting in it right now. Really only consists of four things. That'd be water, yeast, hops, which everybody loves, but malt, the fourth one, which is frequently referred to as the soul of beer. So our beloved craft beer actually uses tremendous amounts of malt, almost none of which comes from anywhere near here. 99% of it comes from far, far away. A lot of it comes from Canada, from Europe, where it's grown there, where it's malted there, and then finds its way somehow on a truck, to a boat, to a port, to a warehouse, and finally gets into our local craft breweries. At Riverbend Malt House, we have a tagline that says malt with a mission. There's two parts to that. The first is to help farmers, local farmers, participate in the craft beer craze. So both my two partners come from multi-generational North Carolinian farming families, and what they want to do is make sure that farmers are getting to grow the grain, the barley, the wheat, the rye that goes into craft beer, and to be able to participate in the economic influence coming along with that and to make it truly, truly local. I have a manufacturing background, and the other part of our mission is to create manufacturing jobs. We will be very strong that America must be in North Carolina, our region must be a manufacturing area. We will be strongly in that. And so what we're doing is we're going to be, over the next four years, we've already mentioned the number of jobs that will be created, but we will be purchasing millions of dollars of grain from local farmers. So that's a big win, and then we will be creating, our full-out plan, over 20 positions, all of which will be above living wage, all of which will have health care that we're providing as well. We sell to, right now, over 100 different craft breweries and craft distilleries, including New Belts in Sierra Nevada, Wheat, Barial, High Wire, and all your favorites, and we hope to continue to do that. And our expansion plans are to go from our fairly meager size right now to growing to be 20 times that size over the next four to five years, and that's what the capital investment is about. Where else to be but Asheville, North Carolina, if you want to be in the craft business, right? So we very much want to be in Asheville, not just in the greater region, but in Asheville, and we've appreciated the support that we've gotten to help make that happen. So I think I already blew the brief part, but I'll stop there. If you've got any questions, happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a comment, and that is that about 20 years ago, I grew a half acre of barley thinking I would make beer, and I didn't read about malting till I harvested, and then I realized I had no way to malt the barley, no practical way to malt the barley. So I'm very acutely aware of what service you provide.
Well, thank you. It sounds like we should talk if you guys have an empty field out back.
Yeah. You should see his gladiolus.
Not sure we can malt those.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing on item D, a public hearing to consider an economic development incentive grant for the Riverbend Malt House. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? I will close the public hearing. On item D, do I have a motion?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing a performance-based economic development incentive grant agreement to support Riverbend Malt House in an amount not to exceed $95,000 over a five-year grant agreement.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. We now have yeast and malt.
I know. It's like, and water.
Yeah, and water. We're getting there. Come on, hops growers. We're ready for you. Come on. Okay, we have a public hearing to consider the voluntary annexation of property at 421 Airport Road. Shannon Tuck will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. In May of this year, MPG Kernersville LLC petitioned the City of Asheville to consider a request for a voluntary annexation of 1.26 acres located at 421 Airport Road, where the property is currently under construction for our commercial restaurant use. To give the council a little bit of orientation, here's the subject property. It is a subdivided parcel from a larger parcel that currently supports the Hobby Lobby property, if anybody is familiar with that. Also, some council members may recall a request for the conditional rezoning of property on Rockwood Road for a hotel approximately a year and a half or so ago. As you can see, from what is highlighted here, is the city's current jurisdictional boundary. The property to the west is in the city limits. The property to the east is generally not. While this property is located on the east side of Airport Road, it is considered contiguous to the City of Asheville and qualifies for annexation by petition as set forth in North Carolina General Statutes 168-31, as well as Session Law 2005-139. If council approves this annexation, it'll become effective immediately, and the next step would be to assign an initial zoning designation to the property, which will also come before council at a later date. That summarizes my introduction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing on the voluntary annexation of 421 Airport Road. Is there anyone wishing to comment? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the voluntary annexation of the property, 421 Airport Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Shannon, you're back up here for a public hearing to consider conditional zoning of the property located at 28 Forsyth Street from RM 16 Residential Multifamily High Density District, conditional use zoning to RM 16 Residential Multifamily High Density District, conditional zoning for the purpose of adjusting property lines and other minor site plan changes.
Thank you, Mayor. And this conditional request is a little bit unique in that it does not include any proposed construction, expansions, other physical changes to the property, or any changes to the use of the property. The request is necessarily only because the applicant, Mildred Lyon, who owns the single-family home property just to the north of the subject property, in cooperation with the subject property owners, wishes to adjust this northern property boundary. The subject property is a small 0.32-acre site and has access from both Forsyth Street, as well as West Street, which is a little bit hard to see on the aerial, but West Street runs here along the western edge of the property, and the subject property has access from both sides. The specifics of the request might be a little bit easier to understand in looking at the blow-up of the blow-up of the survey. Excuse me. What I have here in the dashed red is the existing property line. The driveway is here, highlighted in yellow, and this driveway had at one time been shared by both the single-family home as well as the multifamily structure to the south, but that is no longer the case. The driveway now is exclusively used by the single-family home. So, Ms. Lyon would like to adjust this property line, and the multifamily property owners have agreed to that. This is where the new line would be, and it would allow this driveway to be located entirely on the single-family home property. Because this multifamily structure had received conditional use rezoning back in 2004, when the then-property owners were seeking to convert what had been a small church into the four residential units that exist today, and a change like this would require either an amendment to the original conditional use permit that was part of the conditional use rezoning, or, as an alternative, we could just do a whole new conditional zoning application. And because that is our current practice, and we no longer do conditional use rezoning, we thought that that was the more appropriate path forward. The only other request, or the only other unusual feature about the property that we feel like we should point out, has to do with the on-street parking. And before I do that, I'll just use this photo very quickly to kind of help illustrate the change in the property line. Right now, the property line runs across that driveway, kind of in a diagonal, and so what we're seeking to do is just shift it over to kind of match what most people on the ground would probably think is the current property line. The other thing has to do with the off-street parking that I mentioned. This photo here to the south kind of shows where, in 2004, the property owners had proposed to improve some off-street parking for the four units. The driveway to the property currently exists. It's a little bit hard to tell from the photo, but if you were on the ground looking at this property from West Street, which is where this driveway is, you could tell that at one time there had been a driveway there. Similarly, further, just slightly further north on West Street, there had been a, and still does exist, a sort of a circle driveway, which you can actually see the bottom end of it here. So, there is a circle driveway that kind of circles around the back of the property, and then as you just go further down West Street, you have this driveway that provides access to the back of the property. The 2004 conditional use rezoning included improvement to add seven off-street parking spaces. The area that's inside that fence, you could make an argument, is parking. However, it appears to be sort of lawn and is overgrown, and it's not being actively used as off-street parking today. As part of this conditional use rezoning, rather than ask them to improve that parking because there doesn't appear to be a significant need for it, it's just to maintain the opportunity to have parking. So, it is mentioned in the ordinance that's attached to this particular request, so if there were to be a change in the future, we would have to seek another amendment to this conditional zoning approval, and it would be reviewed by this body again. That concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, note, we need to also resurface that street.
Yeah.
I know that wasn't the point of the presentation, is that? Yikes. Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing on item F. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the conditional zoning request from Residential Multifamily High Density Conditional Use Zone, RM 16CZ, to Residential Multifamily High Density Conditional Zone, RM 16CZ, to allow for a change in the property line and off-street parking requirements, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways: one, supports residential infill; two, encourages the adaptive reuse of abandoned structures; and three, resolves an existing property line issue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have one last item, thank you, Shannon, on our public hearing's agenda, and this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the city of Asheville charter to provide six single-member electoral districts governing the nomination and election of the city council members. So, let me give an editorial comment here before you begin, Catherine. So, this is Part II in a three-part process required by statute for the city council to place on the November ballot a referendum asking voters whether or not they would like to have a city council drawn into six city council seats. We're following a statutory process. As many of you may know, there is a parallel process occurring right now at the state legislature, and in fact, before we went into council tonight, just a little bit before, the House took a vote on Senator Edwards' bill and voted to amend it and then approved it. So, the legislation requiring Asheville to be drawn into six city council seats is also making its way through the legislature. There was an objection to third reading, so they're gonna have to vote on it again tomorrow, and because they changed the bill in the House, it will have to go back to the Senate for concurrence, which is likely to happen, given that the Senate voted to approve the bill the last time they saw it. So, here we are, and I still remember our legal team. Catherine's gonna talk to us about the second step in the three-step process.
Let me put up here, since you've already brought that up, the chart we talked about last meeting. So, I'm here to just briefly introduce this item to you and kind of recap what happened the last meeting. At the council meeting on June 13, council discussed a proposal to amend the city's charter to change the way city council members are elected. And at that meeting, as you mentioned, our office laid out the statutory process the city would have to follow to amend the charter, and also provided dates when the city could follow this process in time to put the proposed charter amendments to a referendum at the 2017 election. So, just to briefly summarize the proposed amendments, as you know, the city's charter sets forth the composition of city council and generally, I mean, governs how city council members are elected. Currently, council is comprised of six city council members and a mayor, and they are all elected at-large meeting by all voters of the city. At the June 13 council meeting, you adopted a resolution of intent to consider an ordinance amending the charter to change the way council members are elected, and that adopted resolution of intent is attached to your staff report. Under the proposal, the mayor will continue to be elected by all voters of the city, but the six city council members will be nominated and elected from six electoral districts. So, the voters who reside in each district will nominate and elect the council members that will represent that district or member, and each council member must reside in the district in which they would represent. Under the proposal, these electoral districts would be used, starting with the 2019 municipal election. So, that first step was completed when you adopted the resolution of intent. Today's meeting is the public hearing on those proposed charter amendments. You would just have a hearing today, and you would then take action at the July 25 meeting, where if you chose to, you would adopt the ordinance amending the charter. And if you wanted to place those charter amendments on a referendum, then that would be the meeting where you would also adopt a resolution calling for an election on the referendum.
It's a July 25 meeting.
Right. So, that's really all I have for you today, unless you have any questions.
So, a couple of things that came out from today's floor debate. One was several amendments were run. John Agar ran an amendment that would allow the whole city to vote for the representative from each particular district, rather than just the voters from that district. That amendment failed. Susan Fisher ran an amendment requiring that the referendum results be binding, basically that the referendum control. Right now, the bill is silent regarding the referendum, silent completely regarding referendum. So, that amendment failed as well. Brian Turner ran an amendment requiring that an independent commission draw the districts and that the city council adopt the independent commission's results. That amendment passed. So, but again, here on our parallel track, we're following the statutory process, which does not speak to an independent commission at all, and in fact, we're not in a position to ask voters via this referendum whether they want an independent commission or not, although we're at liberty to make that decision, to do that if we want to. But ultimately, the city council has to, under the statutory process, make the final decision. So, just so, you know, that's a little bit confusing to some people. Some people have said to me, "Well, are you gonna ask? Are you gonna put independent commission language in the referendum question?" And the answer is no, because that's not what the statute contemplates. But we can independently decide to do that. Our legal team will unsort what in the world it means when we have a statutory requirement versus a, via a local act, versus what the statute requires.
A further point of clarification for people who haven't been following this closely, the reason we're putting the six, I assume we're gonna end up putting the idea of six districts on a ballot, is that that's the plan that the state's working on, and we have to, on a referendum, have a specific plan that we're putting before. It doesn't mean that we want six districts. It means that we want the people of Asheville to decide whether or not there are gonna be six districts.
That's a good point.
So, we're not advocating for this.
We're limited in what question we can ask. We can't simply ask, "Do you want districts or not? And if so, how many do you want?" We have to actually put forward a particular concept, structure, for districts.
So, do not mistake our votes in support of this to be in support of the actual concept of six districts. Two different things.
We have a required public hearing on this item tonight, so that is the point of this meeting. So, I will open this up for the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the city of Asheville charter to provide for six single-member electoral districts governing the nomination and election of city council members? Yes?
Hi, good evening, members of council. Mayor, my name is Vijay Kapoor. I live in South Asheville, and as most of you also know, I'm a candidate for city council. So, I always feel compelled to come up here and comment on this issue. First and foremost, I want to thank council for taking this very seriously and for looking at it, and also for putting it in front of the voters. I've been on record saying, even though it would probably benefit me politically, I'm opposed to having districts. And I think most importantly, we need to have Asheville residents weigh in on whether or not they want districts. On a more substantive matter, in terms of the bill that's being discussed here, you know, I've been asked about this, and the question that I've been trying to get to the bottom of is, what is the problem that the state legislature is trying to solve? Is it one of geography, where the senator who ran this bill was concerned about certain districts not being represented? Or was it about ideology, where he was looking to put, trying to make it easier for someone to be elected in city council that shares his ideology? And I think from the comments, if any of you followed them at the House, you all recalled the left-wing cabal, you know, concerns about being progressive.
We take great pride in that.
Clearly. But I think it was pretty clear as to what the motivation was, I think, for a lot of folks. And let me tell you, this is someone who lives in South Asheville, there is a genuine desire to have some representation from South Asheville, but how that is done, or if that is done, matters. And I think that's something that could be done under the current system, and I wouldn't be running otherwise if I didn't believe that. So, finally, you know, I appreciate the fact that council's looking at this. I just wanted to get my name on the record here in terms of someone who is obviously interested in this from a couple of different perspectives, and thank you all for following up and putting it in front of the voters.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? As I close the public hearing, I will let the legislature know that we had one person who wanted to talk about districts here in Asheville. I'm closing the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Well, do we need a motion, or are we just, was it, we're just doing the hearing?
Are we just doing the hearing tonight? We don't need a motion?
No.
Okay, all right. That'll be next time. Okay, so that concludes our public hearing's agenda, and the next portion of our agenda is the unfinished business, which is completely taken up by Tiger Six, and Tiger Sixteen is entering the room. I wish we had, like, walk-in music.
Like the Rocky?
Right. I know, it's not any of, like, that.
Sing it, Esther.
I'm familiar with this tune. Okay, they are all seated. Take it away.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks so much for taking the time tonight to consider this item, and honestly, for taking a lot of time, many years, and especially in the past week, to talk to committee members and staff to get straight about what you're looking at tonight. And I'm Stephanie Munson Dahl with the Community and Economic Development Department, and what you're being presented with is really a big deal. It is a major milestone in the city of Asheville's riverfront redevelopment program. The community has been planning many projects, arguably for over 50, 60 years, and most notably, the community has been working with you all since 2010 to develop the RAD-TIP, the River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project. This project is the largest, most comprehensive, and also the most costly project in the city of Asheville's capital improvement plan. To get an idea of how large it is, imagine redeveloping a 2.2-mile corridor through downtown Asheville, okay? So, you would start at the northern end of downtown, at the Masonic Lodge, right on Broadway Street. You'd have to run all the way through downtown, down Biltmore Avenue, and get to Biltmore Station before you ended that 2.2-mile corridor. It is the city's most comprehensive project because it is guided by this amazing 2004 city-adopted Wilma Dykman Riverway Master Plan. And this plan posits that you can achieve goals from economic development, transportation, health and housing, recreation, and they do not have to compete with each other. You can look at things in a comprehensive manner, and that is what we are trying to do with the RAD-TIP project. So, what do you get? You get 2.2 miles of greenway that provide healthy options for people, multimodal transportation options throughout the corridor. You're gonna get six acres of open space that is clean and open to the public for free recreation. You get 25 bicycle racks to help bicyclists conveniently and safely store their vehicles, make it more appetizing for them to go to this place. 120 spaces for cars and two new parking lots, and 40 new on-street parking spaces. I know you all know how much parking means to business owners, especially small business owners. You get a quarter mile of realigned riverside drive, a turn lane, and other traffic improvements that help mitigate the most congested part of the River Arts District. Two acres of storm water gardens and wetlands that improve water quality and provide a place for the community to learn about native habitat. A mile of new underground storm sewer system that's gonna help better drain dangerous roadway ponding. One and a half miles of sidewalk that makes it safer to get around and helps promote cleaner air. 1,648 new trees, that is a net gain of 1,100 trees, plus there'll be over 2,500 bare root plantings along the riverbank, and thousands of other plants that are used for landscaping. A mile a quarter that has five-foot-wide separated bicycle lanes, and probably 10 acres of redeveloped brownfields, which you could multiply by three if you were looking at counting in what the private sector is doing. We couldn't be doing all this without partnerships in the community, so I just want to take a minute to talk about what those look like on the ground. Here is the Anders Tobacco Warehouse Building, as most know it, just north of the West Haywood or Craven Street intersection. 80% of this building is in the floodway, not the flood hazard area, but actually in the floodway, and the other 20% of it is sitting in the right-of-way that we need to use to make roadway improvements for better turning radiuses. We're gonna take this opportunity to transform it. It's gonna be the site of most of our storm water management facilities for this project. We're gonna be partnering with North Carolina State University in providing the first Mountain Region Experimental Storm Water Garden. We'll also be partnering with Beast City USA in Greenworks on a Pollinator Garden, and we'll be partnering with the Public Art and Cultural Commission to work on two projects that are funded through the Public Art Policy of the city of Asheville in this project, artist-designed seating and swing sets, and also a mural project underneath the Captain Bo and Smokey Park Bridge, just south of this section, on some city-owned property. You may have seen some construction there lately because we are putting in the first boat ramp that is in the city of Asheville. River access is incredibly important, and we have worked with partners to develop four new river access points in the city in the last three years. We're also developing a wetland that will be a storm water BNP, and we're including benches and benches and swing sets, and also a mural project underneath the Captain Bo benches and seating area for people to have a wonderful place to sit and observe the natural environment of western North Carolina. More city-owned property on this side will be redeveloped. We'll take this opportunity, when we create sidewalks in this area, to bump out some spaces for families and for people who are interested in our own community. We'll be developing a community plaza on the west side of the road. Will be a place for children to come. We'll have a family table and a play area where people can come, take a break across the street. We are developing a small plaza around the preserved smokestack. This is part of the legacy of the Carolina Power and Light ownership in the area and the city's legacy of buying the old ice plant building. It will celebrate and tell people the story about the Riverside Industrial Historic District. About the greenway. So here is a picture of, we're standing right where 12 Bones used to be, and we're looking south. Now you can see what we're trying to imagine in the area to create connectivity, the greenway picture on the upper right. On the bottom, this is the sign that's going to remind people, again, this is paid for with the Public Art Policy funding that's going into the project. It reminds people about their connection to the river. And it's also a meeting point for people to go across the street and make a connection to what will be a new road when this road is realigned. So if you're looking, I'm not sure if you can see the cursor here, this is where Riverside Drive veers over and realigns to mitigate some traffic congestion and geometric deficiencies, as they call it in the engineering jargon world. And this is 14 Riverside Drive, a new city building, and this is Curved Studios. So this whole area here will become a one-way street. We'll go through council, if you authorize construction, to do a naming process, and the current frontrunner on a new name is River Arts Row.
Well, Luna Lane is taken. You weren't here for that part, sorry.
All right.
Trust me, it's funny.
We're going to name the kitchen place, okay? All right. We are leveraging the private investment here. That is what you were talking about tonight, is a really large public investment that's going to leverage an already vibrant place, where people who have been rehabilitating buildings that were purpose in the late 1800s to the early 1900s, there are over 180 artists down in this area, but I'm sure you're well aware that we now have offices, we have restaurants, we have breweries. And this is becoming quite the place where people want to see local businesses succeed. On the top right, I just want to point out for those of you that have visited the new Wedge Building that this is what it looked like under construction, and that there is an emerging outdoor recreation industry, not only in the River Arts District, but in the entire French Broad Riverfront. This has really emerged as the place where people are putting in and taking out and making this kind of investment, is also leveraging other investments that other communities along the French Broad Riverfront have planned. But it is not an easy place to develop or to make investments in. So Riverside Drive especially is hemmed in by the railroad tracks. That produces a lack of connectivity for people. It also produces a question in their mind about the use of the railroad right-of-way. We used to call this area Brownfields Alley because not long ago, we really had no idea what was underneath the soil. We've spent over a million dollars of EPA funds to work with private property owners and also on city property to remediate and get brownfields agreements in the area. And then, of course, much of this area is in the floodway, definitely the floodplain or flood hazard area. And this, you can see, is a typical dilapidated building on Riverside Drive that has seen lesser investment because of its placement in the area, including a sign that indicates that public safety officials would not enter because it is too unsafe for them to do so. So there is a cost to developing in this area. There is not only a fiscal cost, but I'd like to acknowledge that there is an emotional cost, and that when staff has a certain level of disappointment and has been very thoughtful about trying to implement the community's plans in this area, and with the current budget, we are not able to build out all of the originally planned Tiger Six projects. Those projects include the Bakoe Branch Greenway, the Town Branch Greenway, and Livingston Street Complete Streets, and also the French Broad River Greenway on the west side. What that means is that council will have to consider at upcoming time how to prioritize those projects and to look at other funding options. This slide is very high-level, and it just points out to people that the total project cost for design, engineering, administration, and construction of the project is what that $54 million total adds up to. And I would recommend for the people who are watching at home or in the audience that to take a look at the staff report, because I'm just providing you with the high level, but there is a complete breakdown in there of what the costs to the project are. Just to reiterate that there are some changes to the plan, and also you are facing a change to the RAD-TIP project itself as proposed by the city of Asheville, but also federal highway authorities who are providing $14.6 million of funding. And that grant is really guiding the way we take a look at repackaging this project so that it fits within the $54 million budget. So this is the northern end of the project, and right here, this brown line is a retaining wall. It's pretty large. It's very long, and it's pretty tall. The purpose of this retaining wall was for us to be able to provide a sidewalk and bicycle improvement on the east side of the road. And it was an A+++ sidewalk and bicycle improvement. The cost of that is over $2.5 million. And what we are proposing to you tonight is to remove that wall and replace it with an A-level improvement on the other side of the road. So the retaining wall would go away, and the city would take this greenway and run the sidewalk along the same side of the road and get the same connectivity all the way up to Hill Street. The city would be committed to working with Norfolk Southern Railroad on an improvement on the west side of the road that would improve the at-grade crossing for bicyclists. There's several technologies out there that lots of members of the community's bicycle experts and staff have been talking about that look like a really good fit. Moving down through the corridor, moving south, the entire section of the RAD-TIP project remains the same till the location of the former 12 Bones BBQ site. And that section, if you were looking down that roadway, or this is actually looking up that roadway, on the riverfront side, we have planted greenway. And along the roadway side, we have planned protected bike lanes, two travel lanes, landscaping, and a sidewalk on the east side of the road. The proposal that you're looking at tonight asks you to consider building out the entire left side of this picture, which is a greenway. And we could talk about the width in a second. And postponing, or delaying, the second side of the picture, which is by far the most costly side. And so people have an understanding, that cost savings is $4.6 million to delay construction on that piece right there. So the greenway along Lyman Street would also include crosswalks from emerging commercial centers like the Foundation. And there is a possibility that we could take a look at not only the width of the greenway, but materials and some other things that are important to the design and the cost of the greenway moving forward. And I want to remind some people about the bigger picture here, and that this is just part of a larger program of work. We've done something like this before on a smaller scale, and that's the Craven Streets Improvement Project. You're taking a look at a former brownfield area and an area that had very little storm water management, no bicycle lanes. And it was something the city, with partners, was really able to transform through several years, with the help of EDA, TDA, Boca County, Riverlink, and many other partners, including New Belgium Brewing, who did a great job on their site. We were able to clean up the streams and provide a signature trailhead for people who wanted to use the French Broad River Greenway, not to mention building that greenway and all of the other infrastructure facilities that we've mentioned before. Some small but important things, those four river access sites that I talked about. We've been working with Pigeon River Fund, Riverlink, Wildlife Resources Commission, and private business owners to clean this area up and make it safe for the people. And we're talking hundreds, sometimes 1,000 people a weekend that get on the river. You see the before picture last year of the Jean Webb Access Site, and the new picture of the Jean Webb River Access Site on the left. Without Asheville Design Center, we could have never provided the kind of connectivity that we got when we commissioned them, along with partnering with Weekend to do it, to do the 13-Bone Pedestrian Bridge. And that opened up all of Jean Webb Park and that river access site to the three acres of land at 30 Riverside Drive. Good news, please save the date, July 21st. We have a grand opening for 14 Riverside Drive Arts and Culture Center. This is a project that came out of the Riverside Drive Development Plan. When we looked with the community at the reuse of city-owned property, the community advised you to renovate this building and use it to strengthen the identity of the district, and also to put in public restrooms for people who were visiting and using that free, amazing open space that they knew would be coming down the road. So we'll be having a good time there. What's next? So if you approve of the contracts and the other recommendations that are coming to you tonight, one of the big things that we'll be doing is signing a partnership agreement with both the River Arts District Artists and the River Arts District Business Association to help them stay vibrant during the course of construction in the next three years. The CBB is our partner on this. They'll also be signing that, and it's being funded out of this, an allocation from the city manager's office of $25,000. This is going to help with additional wayfinding and district signage, and promote people to come into the district and make sure that those small local businesses can thrive during this extraordinary type of construction. So this is something that's a little bit different than what you normally see. The second thing that would be, what's next is a small but super significant public engagement process. So the Riverfront Commission and the Multimodal Commission could be asked, if you direct us to do so, to work with staff and sponsor a process where everyone is given all of the information about the southern section of the project, and help, and we have a work session, and we talk about some feasible alternatives for making sure that bicycle and pedestrian safety is optimized at the highest level possible while staying within the budget. So that is also under one of the considerations for you this evening. So I thank you very much for taking time to think about all of these considerations, and I am available for questions, but I also have a lot of staff, as you recognize, that is here, not to mention Kathy Ball, the Assistant City Manager, who's going to be able to answer some of your questions.
You don't, there's no, no one else who needs to speak at this point from staff? Okay. Okay, Glenn?
Thank you. I really appreciate that. That was really comprehensive, and I think the people who are in the know, this was repetitive, but I'm hoping that the public really starts to wrap their head around it and understand some of the decisions that have been made and are in process of being made. And I'm really pleased that the city is going to move forward on RAD-TIP. It's an exciting project. There's so much potential. And the fact that the city was able to get the federal highway, the state, TDA onboard with the revisions is pretty exciting, and I think we couldn't go forward without those partners. All that being said, I am really disappointed and frustrated by the large budget overruns. And I'm going to ask some questions of staff that really are being driven by concerns around transparency and equity. So the public input on this project has been stellar, up to a point. Staff's consistently gotten input from our boards and commissions, held public meetings, asked people to weigh in, but then when the bids came in, it felt like radio silence. Why didn't the staff let council and the public know about the size of the overruns and allow the public to weigh in on the portions of the projects that were being delayed, and the ones, and how that selection was made as to what was going to remain in the project and what was going to be delayed? One of the overriding issues that determined this whole scope of the project was connectivity of some of our underserved communities to economic opportunities and other community facilities. How was that overriding equity issue addressed when deciding what stayed and what was delayed? What's the opportunity to delay this decision to get more public input? And if there isn't any opportunity to delay this, what's the plan to make the next steps transparent? How are we going to make sure the public has a real voice in the choices being made going forward? How are we going to ensure that the inequity lens is being applied when completing this project? And I guess finally, for me, a broad thing is, given the fact that, you know, we're getting ready to spend a lot of money on RAD-TIP, but really also a lot of money on our bond, on our bond projects, I really would like to understand, and I guess I have a suggestion, as to how we can stay on top of how the city is coming in on budget or outside of budget, and what the plans are. And so I would suggest, and I'm taking this role on as my, as chair of the Finance Committee, I would like staff very routinely to update the Finance Committee on where, you know, what the status of all these projects are, RAD-TIP, the bond program, and frankly, even the rest of the CIP, and keep us in the loop on a very routine basis as to what the, what the current estimates are, what the issues are, and so that we allow the public to weigh in on some of the changes that may or may not be required to be made if we are coming off a budget. So that's, I'd just like some input from staff on those questions.
Sure. Mayor and Vice Mayor, would you like for me to respond now? Well, I think your questions are fair. I think that they're, of course, getting directly at probably some of the issues that our community is thinking. The first question, and help me to make sure that I cover all of these, but I appreciate you taking time to acknowledge the communication that happened beforehand, because I think there was a team approach in making sure that people were engaged, and that, as you heard, we have several partners who are in this, and so it was very important to us to do that. When we received the bids, and that was a matter of less than five, six weeks ago, our primary concern was how to maneuver through and work through the Federal Highway Administration to be able to maintain the $14.6 million. Without that $14.6 million, we would be looking at a project, instead of asking for $27 million, we would be asking for $13.4 million, of which we could do very little with. So the effort on the part of the team to work with the Federal Highway Administration, number one, to make sure we understood if we were able to keep the funding. Secondly, to make sure that we could understand what scope they would fund. As just a real quick reminder, this project was funded because of a planning effort that happened as part of the Tiger II funding, and that occurred in the 2010 timeframe. And that happened in this area because it was an underserved and the lowest socioeconomic area in the whole city. So the original scope of work that is before you now, that was originally conceived, dealt with the issues of connectivity, of getting people to work, getting them to jobs, getting them to shops. In the application that the city submitted in 2014, it spoke to the core part of this project being the scope that you see before you. So in the process of dealing not only with the state-level Federal Highway Administration, dealing with the national level, and given, honestly, the dynamics of a changing world in Washington, we were very concerned about being able to move fast and be able to get this funding secured. And we, it was, we valued and used all of the input we had received in that previous planning efforts to help guide those decisions. They were all guided through the principles that we heard from our community through all the years of planning. So I will assure you that our staff took into consideration everything that had been done before in order to help us get to a position. Also- Also will tell you, at the same time, we did approach the Tourism Development Authority because we, we have $2.5 million of tourism development product money in, in this project, which is significant in being able to make it happen. So we immediately approached them as well and asked them about being able to secure that funding, what the process would be like, and we have, we are happy to say that the committee, Tourism Development Product Committee, has approved that and it will go before the full board. So while I understand, and having not had access to the information, I understand why people would be concerned about the radio silence, but I will assure you that we worked in every way that we could to guarantee that this community would get the funding for this project. And, and do you want me to go ahead and answer the other questions or concerns? So the issue of serving the underserved community, I mentioned that the Tiger Two grant was specifically for this purpose. So one of the, one of the issues of being able to have the greenway, having full access from a multimodal standpoint through this area is to be able to serve this community. I previously did a tour with Jean Bell and we talked about what, what this area, or even the discussion of this area, was doing to help with crime, help with issues in the public housing nearby, and he said it was tremendously helping because there was more people, more activity, which indicated that there was less crime going on and more people feeling active. One of the issues directly that we were talking about was with the sidewalk. We want to make sure that the Hillcrest community has access to this, to the riverfront. In the bond that was approved, there is sidewalk along Hill Street that will allow that community to connect to this. We regret to tell you that we received no bids for the Livingston Street portion of this project. So it isn't even an option for us not to do that street, no one put in a bid for it.
So you put it out to bid, but you got no responses?
We put it out to bid and got no responses for it, so it wasn't even a consideration as to whether or not we could do it. It is, is high priority for us in the upcoming budget cycle to be able to look at that street and make sure we're coordinating what the community wants to see happen there. So it is a high priority for the staff to make sure that we're addressing the issues that will help the community in that area. We, you alluded to it early, unfortunately, council can make the decision tonight about the contract, we can't guarantee we would maintain the $14.6 million in funding without the approval tonight on the overall contract. The, the approval that we have from the Federal Highway Administration is contingent upon being able to turn dirt August the 1st, 2017. So while, you know, City Council, it is your, your decision to make, what we would tell you is that we don't, we don't know that we could get approval to be able to retain that funding if that happens. So the, the next phases will be very transparent, our goal is to always be transparent. We will have a process every budget cycle and every time there's grants available to ask our community what they want to see funded, approved, and we will be very deliberate in how we do that. The, the question about the bonds, I will tell you that each of us were, want our community to know that we are capable and we are, we will be able to do the work that we said that we would do with the bonds. I appreciate and think the idea of going before the Finance Committee on a monthly, quarterly, whatever you all recommend basis is totally appropriate. I, I also will tell you, we have created a whole department around giving this focus and making sure that these projects are delivered and happen in a timely manner and within budget. So there are several different ways that we are planning to do that. The transparency of it will be through a community dashboard that Jade reported on so that people will be able to see how much money we have been planning and how much money we've spent. So adding to it, the ability to go to, to a council committee, we would welcome that idea. Have I answered all of your questions?
The only question, the one question that I've gotten from the community is the, the timing on the, on the contract. And talk to me about the 60 days, just again to clarify.
So, so when we receive bids, contractors will only guarantee them for a certain period of time because there's changing and, changes in pricing that occurs on a daily basis. And so when we receive a bid, contractually, there is a time limit on how long that bid is good for. In our case, we either have to act on that bid or it expires and it's no longer a valid contract in 60 days. So the reason at the beginning of the meeting that the City Manager wanted to make sure that there was something in place that I could sign the contracts if council approved them tonight, was so we would meet that 60-day timeframe. We also have a requirement of needing to give 30 days mobilization for the contractor to mobilize to the site. So the combination of those two things have to happen in order to meet the August 1st, 2017 timeline.
I have a question that a number of constituents have raised. I've assured them that in my experience on council, that staff is usually fairly conservative in estimates on costs and, and conservative in estimates on the budget each year to allow for what could happen. And, but the question I'm getting asked is how, how could we be this surprised by the bids? How did we not know that construction prices were ratcheting up this fast?
And, and again, that's a very fair question. I think that we, we are, have asked ourselves and I want to go back a little bit because I would imagine that some folks have questions about the $6 million that is included in the budget that council adopted on June 13th. We have, we brought onboard a construction manager at risk in November and part of the responsibility of that, that consultant, construction manager, was to do preliminary estimates. At that time, the preliminary estimates indicated that we needed $6 million additional money. So we had estimates recent that showed the pricing coming in around $6 million more. So as a part of the budget that you adopted in the cap, the CIP, the capital improvement program, was an additional $6 million. So it was, we were very surprised to turn around only less than six months later and receive bids that were in the $20 million range above that. What we, what we have been investigating is that, you know, we never, we did not on any part of the project receive more than two bidders. So there is a lack of competition in western North Carolina for this kind of work, which drives up prices. We also, under state statute, when we receive a bid, we have to receive three the first time. If we don't receive three, we rebid the project and then we can open it with less than three. So that can be a disadvantage because you can have pricing going up in that instance too. So there is a combination of issues that happened that we, we are prepared to work very hard on include trying to break projects down so that small businesses have an opportunity to do more of the work as well. So we are brainstorming and think we can work with, with, coming up with strategies so that we have the opportunity to have more people bid on the project.
I've just got a follow-up question to that. So you, maybe I misheard you, but did you say that none, this is the question about the number of bids? So we, did we receive the requisite three bids? No. So then does that mean we have to go back out?
No, we did rebid it.
Oh, we already rebid it?
Rebid it.
This is the rebid?
And the rebid, what allows you to do when you rebid a project, you don't have to receive three, you can receive one or two.
Got it.
And you can open those bids, but it gives the bidders an additional two weeks. You can't even open the bids, you hand the envelopes back. And then there's an opportunity for them to go back and then come back at the new date and submit their bids.
So we don't have any idea what the costs were in those initial bids?
We, we do not.
Interesting.
And I think it's worth making the point, if it's not clear to people, that the choice we're facing tonight is to either approve this or give up $14.6 million federal dollars.
And the TDA.
And the TDA money, yeah.
And the state money.
So that's another couple million, two and a half million.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not clear how the state money factored into, but there was around $6 million in state.
The, the state money was for land acquisition.
So we've spent that.
And so we have spent that, but again, it was spent for the purpose of doing this project. And so, you know, I think we have some concern about following through on making sure that, that is all secure. At this point, we have no reason to think it isn't.
Your lawyers can tell you that.
Sorry, I've got a couple more questions about, sorry. So just one of the things that I've heard from some people is, you know, a sense that we, of all the parts of the RadTip, that we, we've, we've chosen the wrong things. You know, people like greenways, we should have been building the greenways and, and maybe, you know, redesigning some to reduce costs in that core area of the RadTip. And just, just so we're all clear, what I'm hearing you say is we, you, you went back, looked at the, you know, the whole planning process and made the decision to keep the core, kind of the core piece of it, and we, because of all the deadlines that you talked about, we just did not have time to, to go back out and ask people, well, how would you reprioritize this? Is that right?
Well, we are not sure we would have gotten the funding if we had just asked for the greenways. So when we went back to the Federal Highway Administration.
Yeah, I heard you say the connectivity issue was that in order to preserve the federal government.
That was the guiding principle behind requesting the core part of the project. Our initial, our initial application in fact said the primary element is the first phase of the Wilma Dyckman Riverway Plan. And that was, that was the reason that, that we, we would have not, we do not think we would have been successful if we'd gone to them and say, we want to do all the greenways. It had, it, it was not a matter of us being able to choose.
Right, okay. That, that's very helpful. Two, two other things, you mentioned the Livingston Street. One of the key issues in that area is the lack of a crosswalk across, is that Depot Street there between Livingston Apartments and the, the gas station across the street? That, that crosswalk was part of the Livingston Street improvements, which we didn't get any bids for. Do we have any plans to try to build that crosswalk anyway?
Ken is able to speak to that.
Ken Putnam.
And Ken, you may want to remind folks exactly the location that we're, in front of the Greens.
Right. Ken Putnam, Transportation Department Director. Yes, we have a plan. I was just waiting for all of this to pan out, but we already have a plan to move in to make a crosswalk at that location and it's right there on Depot Street, right in front of Greens Grocery.
Okay. And will there be any pedestrian, like either pedestrian activated signals or a yellow flashing light above it, or anything to alert drivers in that area that there, other than the crosswalk itself, that there will be, could be people crossing the street?
The supplemental signs that we planned to use there, we've already used them in a couple of locations is, are the signs that have the lights going around the perimeter of the sign itself. We've got a stop sign in downtown Asheville that does that. We've also got at least two pedestrian crossing signs and this will be the third location where we'll put these signs.
Okay. My second question, which you should stay right where you are, is about the sidewalk on Hill Street that, as you mentioned, is part of our bond project, and yet we also know that as part of the I-26 project, DOT is going to come in and rip all that up and put a sidewalk there anyway. So are we still thinking that we're going to build the sidewalk with the bond money only to have, I mean, I realize that the challenge here is that we do want to connect Hillcrest, that's very important, and that might not happen for several years if we don't build the sidewalk at the same time.
So I'm thinking, I can answer that, we've been in discussion about it, but we have been having discussions about building a lower cost sidewalk so that the access is there at this time, but rather than spending the budgeted amount, we have kind of $300 and some thousand dollars that we could potentially put in an asphalt sidewalk so that there would be access, but it wouldn't have to be torn up when I-26 comes in.
And then my final question is, Steph, you mentioned that there would be a public process going forward, both to talk about, or there might be, we could ask for that for this, a public process to talk about the improvements on the Lyman Street segment and what, what those might be going forward as part of this project or as a separate project? And then are we also talking about having a public process, even if just through multimodal and riverfront redevelopment commissions, about prioritizing the green, the other greenways that are not, that are being delayed now is because, because of the funding?
Yes, it's my understanding that Lucy Crown, the Greenway Coordinator in the Transportation Department, will be having a Greenway Master Plan update in the coming year, so they'll be talking about that to you. And that will be the longer-term plan on top of the short-term plan that we'll run. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Other questions from council? I have some comments about it, but could someone help me with the logistics of the voting here? We have four items, are we, are we, what do we need in terms of resolution, resolution?
You need four votes.
Yep, we need four votes, yep. So I want to first acknowledge all the hard work of the staff and the, and I, and I will echo Gwen's comments about the public engagement process being stellar. It was very thorough. And I know that the main key stakeholders that actually own property now on the river foots like that have already had a chance to talk with staff and they've done that. But, but I, you know, I was shocked to hear what these bids came in at. I think the staff was equally shocked and I know they got the bids in and spent 99.9% of their time working to reconfigure things so we could preserve the federal and TDA funding we've got for this project. And that is not, it sounds like to me that's not really black and white in terms of what the rules are there, you're trying to reconfigure a project in such a way that you think the federal government will continue to allow the funding to be available. So I know that's a challenge and I, and I'm glad that none of these items have dropped off the list, they are now further down the list without specific funding designations and that's, that's not always a good thing, that's, that's pretty serious. And I, I do, I, I did not fully understand that we actually did not receive any bids at all for the Livingston Complete Streets. So that, that certainly is a challenge in terms of trying to make a decision tonight about what to do, but I feel that that part of the project needs to continue to be a priority and I've had an opportunity to talk with Kathy about this individually and we talked about fitting that into our funding for next year, which of course is a decision we'll have to make next year if, if we're still here. But this council, and nonetheless, will have to make a decision about that. So, so that's, to me, that's a very important piece, that providing connectivity for the neighborhood, AB Tech and Mission and the river, it's, it's just such a vital corridor and I know the community participated in a lot of meetings talking about the elements of that project. I guess it's alarming that we don't have folks bidding on some of this. Maybe we need to all stuff what we're doing and get a contracting company going or something, but that, that's troubling and I can see how that's affecting the bid prices, obviously. And I'm not sure that it's going to get better anytime soon, so it's not apparent to me that delaying this and, and losing all this funding would be a smart decision tonight. So we're a little bit between a rock and a hard place, but, but it is important to me that we continue to prioritize the Livingston Complete Streets. And as well, and I know we're going to do this, but looking at the Lyman Street portion between the old 12 bones and the Amboy Road Bridge, looking at that greenway, it was proposed to be 10 feet wide with a separate protected bike lane, and since we're not doing the road piece, which included the protected bike lane right now, that portion is getting delayed, I, I think it would be very important for us to look at an alternative to the greenway project, to widen that greenway to accommodate the volume that we anticipate in that section. And I'm not an expert, but I, we've got a little diagram here showing us an alternative 16-foot multi-use path to be able to accommodate all of the bike head traffic we anticipate in that section. And staff assures me that this can be done through a change order process, but of course it will have to be engineered and the pricing will have to come in and we'll have to, I assume that'll be, depending on the price differential, we'll have to vote on that at some subsequent meeting. So those are my comments and concerns.
You just raised an interesting question.
You just raised an interesting question. By the way, I fully support the wider bike lane. But what occurs to me is, because of the federal money involved, doesn't it limit the contractors who can bid? I mean, don't they have to be qualified under the federal rules somehow? I think I've heard that.
There's additional, and help me, there's additional reporting requirements, there's Davis Bacon requirements, there's other requirements that have to be done, but I would have to, I think anybody can bid, they just have to meet the requirements that are set forth in there, which can be administratively...
They're shaking and nodding up in here, yes.
...burdening.
Dustin Clemmons, Capital Projects Program Manager. There are, there are additional requirements for DBE participation as far as being a regular general contractor. Normally, if it's a DOT project, you have to be certified through the state, but because we're direct recipients from the federal government, the contractors weren't limited to be on that list of certified DOT contractors.
Okay. The reason I ask is I wondered if, if, because it was part of this project, if we didn't get sidewalk bids for the Livingston Street, what I meant was if it was like local contractors, we get, we have sidewalks built all the time. I mean, so that's what I was wondering, if there was some special requirement because of the federal money. But, okay, thank you.
What, Dustin, actually, could you, wait, do we know why we didn't get more bids on this? Do we have, I mean, is it just that there's so much plentiful work out there, or what, what's the deal?
You know, I think there's a few reasons. One, this is a really big project, and the bonding requirements are higher than a lot of small general contractors could afford. And then another reason for the Livingston Street, I suspect, is that it's further out in the schedule. It's really two years out before we can do anything because there's a big waterline relocation project that's taking place. So I think contractors were just a little bit reluctant to commit to a price that far in advance of the actual work. But, but also, you know, it's not, that portion isn't a huge project, and there's a lot of work in the state right now. So contractors just have the ability to choose what they want to bid on now.
So they're going for volume there. Any other comments? Okay, so we, we will need to take these one by one. The first one is a resolution authorizing the city manager, which is now Kathy Ball, to execute a contract amendment with Beverly Grant, Barn Hill, JV for construction of the RAD tip and Five Points roundabout portion of the Tiger Six projects. Folks that are here that want to talk about this topic, once we get a motion on the floor, then I'll open it up for comments.
So move.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. If you, I don't, if you want to talk about any of these things, come on up. Mark Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mark Hunt. I'm here as a citizen, a former member of City Council that was deeply involved in planning and design of these, and currently, many hours a week volunteer in the Woodfin Greenway and Blueway Project, which is almost $14 million, a very similar infrastructure going in just to the north. That will ultimately be part of the corridor. My suggestion tonight is that council take a very deliberate step to direct staff to elevate this notion of widening the greenway along Lyman from 10 to 16 feet. And I'd like to start with context. This is a map that boils down our greenway networks to the core networks that are primarily along the French Broad and Swananoa rivers. These are going to be the busiest greenways, and our city are going to have a variety of users. They need to be able to handle high volumes. The Federal Department of Transportation offers guidance about the dimensions of multimodal or multi-use paths, greenways, et cetera. Laying down just the 10-foot greenway for now and putting off to a date uncertain the bike lanes and additional sidewalk on Lyman puts us at risk for living with a very undersized piece of infrastructure. Thus, the suggestion to take it to 16 feet wide and also add stripes so that users can differentiate. More specifically, the proposal is, let me just, actually, I'm going to cover up the lower picture for a second here. This is more or less the current configuration, the configuration of the current design. We've got 10-foot greenway here, protected bike lanes here, protected by a small curb four feet wide, the travel lanes and the sidewalk here. Staff's proposal is that we'll not build this for now, that we'll build this for now. The suggestion I have is that instead of building just this for now, let's take this to 16 feet wide, put stripes on it, and assure that different users and high volumes can fit on that. And when it does come, come time to rebuild Lyman, let's not build the bike lanes there as well. My suggestion is this will be adequate along with the sidewalk on the other side of Lyman. So the staff recommendation in the agenda items has this 10-foot greenway as the plan, and it, it does discuss that perhaps adjustments can be made, and the staff recommendation seems to lump those possible changes in with the consideration of how we're going to do the rest of the projects, the Klingman Forest and Town Branch and so on. And the concern I have, and many citizens have, is that the, that that would take too long. Construction needs to happen, ground needs to be broken. So let me offer the specific suggestion I have here, that council express its firm priority for this proposal, direct staff to expedite due diligence, and determine feasibility with a view to adapting the design for the 16-foot greenway, excuse me, multi-use path, and execution of a construction change order so that construction of a 16-foot wide multi-use path can occur on schedule beginning in August when ground is broken. And I would suggest council consider a separate motion and vote to direct staff along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, now you've got to redo the microphone. Yeah, just bend it, yeah.
Thanks, Mark. My name is Matthew Fusco, and I reside at 28 Edgeline Road in Asheville. I want to thank Mayor Manheimer, the ladies and gentlemen of the council, and staff, and also Ms. Muntz and Dahl for the presentation she gave earlier. As a landscape architect, it's pretty exciting to see the prospects of what's happening in the riverfront. But tonight, I'm here wearing a different hat. I'm here along with a few of my fellow board members of Ashwam Bikes, and we are here to speak to the RAD tip and more specifically, the report dated January 27th, the mayor and council members.
Sorry, she's new.
Uh-oh.
As we all know, the River Arts District is the hub of transportation improvements our community envisions and that our members believe in. While we understand that large projects may go over budget occasionally, we stand firm in our commitment that safe and easy-to-use multimodal infrastructure is crucial to the RAD tip, which we have all invested in. As you guys mentioned, stellar. Everybody was out to say their piece. Moreover, the infrastructure we implement along this section of the French Broad River will set the tone for future projects outside of the project area, which will not only benefit the growth of our community, but will further enhance the ability to attract tourism, industry, and great people to our area. And since these projects involve DOT roadways, what we do here really could set the tone for what happens for projects throughout the state, not just in our area. And we're really excited about that. If adjustments are made to the project that, excuse me, if, if adjustments to the project do not allow for the RAD tip to be implemented in its current form, we urge you to not lose sight of the fact that public safety is of paramount importance. Areas of critical concern that we have expressed previously in our letter to the mayor and council include the railroad crossing near Smokey Park Supper Club, which we understand is going to be funded, and we wholeheartedly approve of that. And we also understand the need to take a hard look at the project due to the budgetary constraints. But again, we stand firm in our belief that funding meaningful improvements along Lyman Street would be the best way to meet our city's commitment to active transportation and infrastructure and public safety. If council is not immediately able to fund the current plan that we have laid out, our next best option would be to reduce the footprint of the Lyman Street section and include a minimum 16-foot wide greenway, which you guys have mentioned and Mark has too. The 16-foot wide greenway would meet federal highway standards in terms of striping and would accommodate high-volume pedestrian and bicycle use. We have reached out to property owners, business owners, and key stakeholders who support the multimodal transportation infrastructure in this section, and they do support a 16-foot wide multi-use path as well. So we feel encouraged by that. We ask council to reaffirm its commitment to addressing multimodal infrastructure by giving clear direction to staff to work immediately to widen the currently proposed 10-foot wide multi-use path to a 16-foot wide multi-use path as previously described. We are concerned that the opportunity for that might be lost if quick action is not taken now, and we urge you to consider this element a top priority in the issues that you have on the table tonight. In closing, we want to let you know that Ashwam Bikes is and always will be a willing partner and is eager to assist the city in its reevaluation of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Great, right on. My name's Jonathan Wayne Scott. We're talking about the RAD tip project, and I'm thrilled that you guys are shocked by the bids, the cost, and that you're as concerned as you are. Four or five years ago, when this was put out on the table, we congratulated staff on their hard work and their very thorough efforts to bring us the cost of this project. There was a tremendous amount of community engagement, and we got it incredibly wrong. And the only reason that I've heard thus far is that we missed that the construction costs would go up. Somehow, in this building boom that we pay millions of dollars to help create, we missed that fact. Now we're faced with $74 million worth of borrowed money that is relying on this staff and their numbers. If we're off on our $74 million budget, as much as we were on RAD tip and as much as we were on Craven Street, we're in really serious trouble. Craven Street went over-budget by $6 million. RAD tip is now over-budget by $26 million, I believe. That's $32 million. That's two years' worth of tax collected by the Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority, which obviously we can't use a penny of for our River Arts District Tourism Improvement Project. Conversely, we are saving about a third of a million dollars a year on our light bulb change. It's going to take us 100 years to make up that $32 million overage on these two projects. So I don't understand how you continue to have so much faith in staff, which has gotten this so thoroughly wrong, and you should have been able to see it coming. Construction costs going up in the middle of a construction boom? Who would have thought? Are you kidding me? I watched Craven Street get built, and I watched it get torn up after it was finally paved to fix stormwater issues. Our Public Works Director has a formative professional and educational experience in stormwater management. Craven Street is a half a mile long. The River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project is 2.2 miles. This is extraordinarily expensive, and I personally have no faith that these numbers that we're given now are going to hold, given the growth that we're going through and the ridiculous price of land here in Asheville. We have other infrastructure problems to deal with, and I'm very concerned that we haven't prioritized things correctly, that we're going to go on a paving spree and not deal with our rusty water pipes so that our water pipes will then break, and then we can dig up our brand-new roads. I watched it happen on Craven Street over and over again in the last two years, two years which was supposed to be a six-month project. That's not good performance, and I don't think it's appropriate to continuously congratulate staff on their thoroughness when their thoroughness is providing nothing but bad information. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Oh, well, he, oh, sorry. Kim, you're next.
Hi, I'm Han Winergron. I sit on the Bike Ped Task Force, and I'm currently trying to get on the Multimodal Transportation Commission. And I learned a lot tonight, but I just wanted to emphasize, and I realized there was a huge time crunch on this project. But one of my concerns, and this is more of a question, I guess, is that as we ran into limited funding and had to pick and choose which things could or could not be funded, it seems to me, and I think that's echoed by AOB and a lot of other people in the community, that bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure is, is critical infrastructure. It's life-or-death infrastructure. And other things like parks and, you know, play areas and even parking lots may not be as critical. And so I just really wanted to emphasize that point of how important it's, a life-or-death situation, and people, you know, are in real danger. And also, I think it's something the community has resoundedly asked for, is sidewalks and bike lanes. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Good evening. Kim Roney, I'm on the Multimodal Transportation Commission, and my major concern as someone who has biked along that road at 4:30 in the morning from south of the Old Twelve Bones to get to my job, and then on Biltmore State, and I see so many people going to AB Tech in that direction that are trying to walk through that area, which I've only done once and will try never to do again, is that in this process, we really do need access to information for the public. And as much as I want to see an overflow room at the multimodal meeting this Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00 in this building, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday is not the most accessible time for all of Asheville's working people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Mayor, council, I'm Carlton Collins. I'm chair of the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. I just wanted to come tonight to affirm the work of the staff by navigating this tricky, tricky subject that we have and all the planning that they've done to get us to this point. I do want to offer my support for the resolution. I think as we look back 20 years from now, we'll see this as a watershed moment for the city in terms of what's been done right now. I do concur with many of the comments that I've heard tonight about the, the next steps in the process being very open in terms of engagement, that there be some dedicated process for discovering how to widen the pedestrian path to accommodate bikes on that west side of the river. So I just wanted to be here to offer my support as chair of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. The first resolution, all those in favor, please say aye.
Wait, Mr., can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask you a procedural question? So there's been a suggestion that we add to this about a change order around the 16-foot greenway. Does that happen, if we're going to do that, does that happen later?
Yes, let's pretend it's number five.
Okay, pretend it's number five.
Or pretend that four gets adjusted, because that's really where it would be, right?
Right, yeah, we'd modify number four, actually, I think.
Okay. Back on number one, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number two, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with SEPI Engineering and Construction for construction inspection and material testing services on the RAD tip and Five Points roundabout portion of the Tiger Six projects. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with CDM Smith Engineering Company for Construction Administration and Value Engineering Services for the RAD tip Five Points roundabout portion of the Tiger Six projects. Projects, project.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then, so the fourth one we'll do is a, is a budget amendment on the amount of $6 million from debt proceeds, grant funding, and enterprise fund contributions to fully fund the contracts above and all of the remaining costs associated with the Tiger Six suite of projects, which include but are not limited to utility relocation and the purchase of property, with the addition that staff conduct due diligence and prioritize getting the design adapted for the Lyman to Amboy Road greenway slash multi-use path
Well, I would recommend that we go back, because right now you've approved all of the items under number one, which is basically an A, B, and C.
I wondered about that.
So I'm looking at this paper version, so I will go back.
So number two is directing staff to work with Norfolk Southern, so that is a standard.
Right.
Right, that's why I was looking at a different list.
So.
So wait, are we, so are you looking?
Go back to this.
Oh, you're opening the text, not, because the resolutions on the agenda are one, two, three, four.
Right.
All right, so we're not going to follow the base of the agenda? We're going to, yeah, I'll open it up, so we want to do?
You got it. It's at the bottom of that.
I think either way, you've done it correctly. I think that item number two, directing staff to work with Norfolk Southern, doesn't have to be an official vote, it's just directing staff to do that, so it can be an a.
Let me out with your directing staff to work, okay.
So look at one, two, three, four.
But, okay, I see the recommendation. Is this recommendation fully embedded in number four that's on the agenda? Or what are we, how does this?
So number four on the agenda is the budget amendment. I think you've covered it, except for the Norfolk Southern.
No, we haven't done the budget amendment for $6 million yet.
Well, that's what I just did. I did the motion to, for the budget amendment. Added the multi-use path, so.
So moved.
And I'm, yeah, you're moving, I'm happy to second. I just want to make sure that staff is.
All right, so maybe what you would prefer is that we use this very thorough recommendation in the staff report rather than the simpler language that is number four in the agenda. Would that work?
Second.
All right, somebody want to read?
I think it'll be clear.
Okay, I'm going to do it. So it'll be a motion authorizing the city manager to execute multiple contracts to implement a portion of the Tiger Six suite of projects, including A, construction manager at risk, CMAR, contract amendment with Beverly Grant, Inc., Barn Hill, a 50-50 joint venture for $25 million.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven million, sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. B, inspection and material testing contract with SEPI Engineering Construction. So are these all the ones that we just did?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've done this one.
You told me I needed four motions.
Well, go ahead. Go ahead. Keep going.
You told me I needed four.
So we approved those as separate pieces, but now we're to two, working on the railroad. Right.
Man, this, I am not having a good time with this. So we did one, two, and three.
Right, those are, those are done.
Okay, I move we direct staff to work with Norfolk Southern to make changes to the scope of work within the existing construction agreement to modify the Northern Railroad crossing to ensure safe bicycle accessibility through the at-grade crossing.
Second. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that's.
Didn't do the budget amendment yet, right?
Yeah, so now we need the budget amendment.
Okay, I move we make a budget amendment in the amount of $6 million from debt proceeds, grant funding, and enterprise fund contributions to fully fund the contracts above and all previously approved, and all of the remaining costs associated with the Tiger Six suite of projects, which include but are not limited to utility relocation and the purchase of property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And we didn't do the budget amendment yet, right?
Yeah, so now we need the budget amendment.
Okay, I move we make a budget amendment in the amount of $6 million from debt proceeds, grant funding, and enterprise fund contributions to fully fund the contracts above and all previously approved, and all of the remaining costs associated with the Tiger Six suite of projects, which include but are not limited to utility relocation and the purchase of property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask a question?
Okay, no, hold on, now we got this fourth motion. Well, it says four here, but technically it's five. Okay. So I see, I see what's going on here now. Thank you for figuring that out. So we have a final motion directing staff to commit to planning and community engagement efforts which will prioritize the future phasing of greenway projects and evaluate multimodal transportation alternatives associated with the south roadway improvements, which I assume is the stretch between Twelve Bones and Amboy Road.
Yes.
And, you know, I would ask that that language be a little bit stronger, that we prioritize reengineering the, that's multi-use paths between Twelve Bones, the Old Twelve Bones, and Amboy Road to accommodate an appropriate width to compensate for the loss of the protected bike lane, since we're not able to do that portion of the project at this point.
So move.
And I'll second, but I just have a question about, is staff, I have not been part of any of these conversations, so how does the Radtip team feel about that?
Well, two things I would say. I think, I think we're supportive of the concept of doing, of expanding the 10-foot-wide to a 16-foot multi-use path. I think that that concept is, is a good concept. I think two things that we would want to be able to say is that we want to honor the process of going through these committees to do, to get input. So I think we've heard that there was a concern about that, so we want to be able to take the idea to multimodal and to greenways and bike and ped and get, collectively get input on that. And we also want to make sure that we are able, at this point, we obviously are a little gun-shy about making commitments, about being able to do certain things without knowing the cost and knowing the design parameters. So I think we're open to, to doing this, but we would like to be able to go back and do more feasibility. I understand the urgency of doing that, so I think we're open to getting direction to do that within a certain time period so that it's clear to the community that we're making this a priority to evaluate that option. But we also want to make sure we leave time for public process and that we leave time to check to see if there are any, what I would call fatal flaws with doing this option. We don't believe there are, but we feel like we, we need some level of time to be able to do that.
Is there any reason that would delay the start on August 1st?
No.
Okay.
No, we, we have to do a change order anyway. I think what, what we're hearing from the community is that we don't want to start any part of that work to have it, have to have it redone.
Right.
And that we want to pass along a sense of urgency about making a decision, because the three-year window of construction is really tight. So we would need to make a decision on this fairly quickly and come back to you in order to be able to keep this project moving in that area. So that is what, that is what, the reason we would like some level of ability to, to leave this and say prioritizing working through the council commissions and doing the feasibility and doing that within 60 days. If, and I'm getting buzz here, so I want to make sure with staff. I don't know if they're, like, sending text messages to me, like, shut up, or. So if you want to, you want to come up, staff?
If I didn't clarify this earlier, the proposal by staff is that we have a process during the month of July. It would, it would include all of the committees that you mentioned, as well as the Riverfront Commission, and that we could come back through some process, whether we report out to both PED and Finance Committee on those findings, or if you feel the need to then send it to council or get staff nods to move ahead with something that has been vetted by a variety of committee members.
Well, it may need to come back to us if the change order is significant enough, right? But otherwise.
So it's a very short process.
So running it through the process, being able to do the feasibility work on it, get an estimate from the contractor for, and then being able to come back to you within a certain time period, I think, I'm hoping that that will address the concerns that staff has and that the community has. We also, while we don't anticipate it would be a problem, we also have to have conversations with the Federal Highway Administration.
Okay.
Should that, I don't think we've voted on that yet, right?
We had a motion and a second.
Yeah. Should we make an amendment to add the 60-day window, or?
Let's just have the motion include.
I'm getting thumbs up on 60 days.
Yeah, let's have the motion include the 60-day time period.
Okay.
The motion includes the 60-day time period.
Will you still second it?
Yes, I still second that.
Yes. I resecond.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, did we do, we did it all on this one? Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. Unless there's another secret thing. I have a few people that signed up to speak. One person signed up to speak about the topic we just did, Matt, so I know Matt, all done. Allison Frank, she's here.
Ms. Frank, we, we have three minutes.
Fine.
And you can wait till they clear out.
Yeah. Our ruling, so.
I live in Grove Park. I've lived there five years. The reason I moved there is because I like to walk. That's how I get exercise. We have a serious bear problem. Last summer, I had nine run-ins with bears, two of which were dangerous. The first time a bear walked out right in front of me, I was a foot from him. He walked out of somebody's backyard. We were eyeball to eyeball. Few weeks later, I was walking down Kimberly, a man pulled up behind me and said, get in my car right now. And I didn't realize, you know, I thought he wanted a date, but it turns out, there was a bear charging me behind me. Okay, then I had nine other encounters in the garbage, in my yard, in the neighborhood. So I got disgusted, and I called the police. They said, we can't help you. Called the wildlife biologist, called him, head of urban bear study. He said, Ms. Frank, there were 200 tagged bears in the city limits. I said, that's lovely. So what can we do about that? He said, well, we can transport them. No, that's not feasible. But city council has been told that they can buy locking garbage cans. That's what the real problem is. We have destroyed their habitat. Started 2007, they knocked down the top of Town Mountain to build something called Bartram's Walk, which fell apart during the recession. Okay, this is serious. I'm sick of people saying that. We live with the bears, and they're cute, and they're feeding the bears, and they think this is okay. I just listened to you guys say you're going to build a $54 million project, and our safety is not as important as some greenway, some exercise place to bring in more tourists. I'm a real estate agent. I own a referral company. We have been floating ideas because of city council's lack of care of the citizens of this city. This is not funny. And we can petition the North Carolina Real Estate Commission to add another item on the property disclosure statement that says all sellers must disclose if they see bears on their property, which will go to your tax base, which will discourage people from moving here. I really, you know, I, I think this is unconscionable to allow this. This is only 200 tag bears that they know about.
Thank you. We, we have had this question come up before, and I'm trying to remember what the conclusion was about the trash cans. I'm looking at you, Kathy, but if you don't have it off the top of your head.
Well, and we have an email from, from Tom Gallo about this, too, with a specific request that the city order 100 of these cans and then offer them, offer them for sale at either cost or a premium. His point in ordering them in bulk was, is that that would save on shipping. It's just too expensive. I guess my, you know, what I'm curious to know is how these cans interact with our trucks, or can our trucks do, can our trucks pick up these cans? Or, and I don't, I mean, I would be interested to know the answer.
We can provide files.
I don't know what committee that goes up through, but.
Yeah, so if staff could take a look at that, because that is, we have the automated garbage truck, so we have to see what, what, how, how that would work. And then the pricing, you know, what would we be able to offer them to people?
I will say, I just, on this point, I heard a presentation by the bear guy, the wildlife guy, who's doing the study, and they have, they have tracked these bears, and in fact, some of them leave the city. They get as far away as the Smokies, and then they turn around and come back, because it's, it's pretty good eaten here.
Very.
So I, I completely agree that for safety issues, it would be great if we could figure out some way to allow homeowners to, you know, protect themselves.
I encourage people not to put food scraps in their garbage can until the morning of the pickup. That's, like, especially meat scraps, whichever are high odor, you can put them in a bag and put them in your freezer until the morning of your pickup, and that way, you're not putting a lure in there. I mean, that's, that's certainly a, I do that, and I don't, I have bears walk by my house, and they've never gotten in my garbage. So.
Okay. That is all I have in terms of folks that have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak during the public comment period? You're just observers. All right, well, welcome. Okay. Members of the public who are remaining. We do not have a closed session. We don't have a closed.
Right. We don't.
Right.
You know, I wanted to, just before we finish tonight, I wanted to follow up on a couple of items that we heard from last time. We had a lady who came to speak to us about tree clearing up on Bowcatcher, and staff went and checked out those situations to look and see if there were any violations. And as, I think you all both commented, there were no violations, because they weren't doing grading. They weren't doing any, any grading, and they didn't need permitting for the tree removal. But I don't know, and I'm not sure, because the information I have doesn't go the further step of saying can cities regulate tree clearing like that? So I don't know the answer to that question, whether or not that's an option for cities.
I know this from Tree Commission. We've been, I've been their, you know, liaison there for seven years now. It's really, really hard to control tree clearing on private property in North Carolina.
Because of the permissions.
Yep.
But isn't the Tree Commission sort of working on an idea of educating homeowners as to the benefits of maintaining trees? So although we may not be able to force homeowners to keep the trees, to improve education as to the benefits is an option.
And then also, we had, Dewanna Little came to us and said she had an experience at the Wesley Grant Center, trying to sign her kids up for summer camp, and was told she couldn't do that at that location because of where she lived, and she was directed to go to the Walton Summer Camp. And we did a little checking into this to find out what was going on here, and it sounds like there was definitely a communication error, but the, the grant program is not restricted to anyone by where they live, but they are full, and they're, they don't have any spaces. They, they do have a waitlist, and someone from Parks and Rec has, has reached out to Dewanna and talked to her about, about that. So I understand now there's been some clarification around those communications. There is still space at Walton, but Walton is restricted by where you live to better serve the community where it is located. So that, to answer some of the burning questions from, from last time, and then also, we got this cute letter from a seven-year-old who wants a basketball court, but I don't know where this park is.
It's in West Asheville.
Well, I see that, yes.
He's in one of my neighbors, or he is one of my neighbors. So this is at the end of Vermont Avenue. Vermont Avenue just feeds right into West Asheville.
Oh, okay, so I'm glad you knew the context. It just said West Asheville. So maybe we could ask Parks and Rec if there is a plan for a basketball court at the park located at the end of Vermont.
It's actually called West Asheville Park.
Oh, that is why, okay, this wasn't a location description.
No, that was the actual name of the park.
Okay, I thought, well, which was actual park? Okay. Okay, next to the picnic shelter specifically is the preference. This is very cute. This is how you do it. All right, so that, that's all. I've got anybody else? All right, we're adjourned until...